Tara Jenner. Tara Jenner and Denise Nystrom.
Okay. Before calling the ladies, before we begin, if there is anyone in the audience that wish to address the board who has not had the opportunity to complete a form, could you please raise your hand?
There's some that are coming in with their cards.
Okay. Thank you. And if you have not filled that out, you still may speak, and then we'll get your information. Mr. Pre-Bruno?
So at this time, Madam Chair, I have two speakers, but I know that we're collecting cards, so we can go ahead and begin with Tara Jenner and Denise Nystrom.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hi, Tara Jenner. Just wanted to address two things. One, the reorg chart, and the other one, the mask opt-out policy you guys have. Let me begin by saying that when I was active-duty military, I was advised to speak with one of the brightest and sharpest NCOs in my division when I arrived, and that individual gave me two great pieces of advice. The first one was, find out what your job is, and find out what the job is of those that are working for you, and stick within those parameters. So I encourage you all to do that when it comes to what your job is and what that is of the superintendent. The second part of the advice that he gave me very early on was, talk to the people that are below you and around you, and find out what their short-term, long-term, and midterm goals are, and then make sure that you give them an opportunity to be able to excel in those areas, a chance to learn new skills that are within an area that if they make a mistake, you can correct it before it becomes a problem. And when I look at what the superintendent has created as far as his new organizational chart, it looks to me as though he might have, at least if not been told that, has discerned the same thing on his own accord. He has set up an organizational chart which will allow people to highlight their skills and abilities, and be able to demonstrate that in an open forum where everyone can see when they succeed. And if they do have any shortcomings, it will give them an opportunity to be able to have necessary feedback so that they can improve, and change, and modify their position or their management style, or anything else for that matter, without it impacting the district too dramatically, rather than flying under the radar and possibly causing long-term problems because it goes unnoticed, or if there's any nefarious actions going on, intentionally unnoticed. So I strongly encourage the board to adopt his reorganization plan. And I looked through the different job descriptions that were there. I like the fact that he has made some minor modifications to that, but having been active-duty military, I like the fact that there is some acknowledgement that military experience on top of academic performance also helps. When it comes to the recent changes that were made regarding the mask opt-out, I would like to note that there is no obligation to fill out an opt-out form. Your actions actually speak for that. That's right under the parent right law. However, one of the concerns that was raised to me was that there are families that want people to be masked, so I encourage you to revisit that policy and make it an opt-in, not an opt-out, because the ones that are concerned about the masks are the ones who want their children to make sure that they wear their masks. Opting in is the only way to accomplish that. Opting out does not meet the goals of those particular family members, and it puts an undue burden on those that don't need to ask permission for something that is their right. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you. Will the following individuals also please line up? Gary Griffin, Harlan Parish. Mike Martin.
Denise Nystrom. First, I would like to thank Dr. Savage and Board members Chair Jordan, Board Member Melissa Giafinelli, Board Member Gwen Gittens, and Board Member Betsy Vaughn, who were at the Edison Mall for the fashion show. Your giving up your personal time demonstrated your love for children. And I apologize for the email that I sent where I left out Board Member Gittens, but I was just so in awe of what Chair Jordan was wearing with that dress and that denim blazer and those sunglasses, I think I just had a lapse of thought. I would like you all to understand that times have changed. Whereas many of you have been able to make decisions in the past and the community was not really paying attention, that is not what is happening any longer. We are very much wide awake, and we are following what you are doing. In fact, a large number of us have taken the time to find out what was going on several years ago, and we are not clueless to the fact that transparency and ethics were an issue years ago, and it hasn't been resolved. The workshop meeting that took place on March 14, 2019, where two Lee County staff members were attempting to teach the board what transparency looks like, was a charade. We are all adults here, and we know what ethics and transparency looks like. And we also know that there are three board members who must have their own agendas, and they thwart the district at every opportunity they can. I want everybody that is here to understand that the lack of transparency is something that has been discussed for years, and yet it still continues today. It is incumbent upon you not to stand in the way of Dr. Savage, who is trying to bring accountability, efficiency, and transparency to the district. As an expert in the industry and a former Chief Officer of Human Resources, I have thoroughly examined his reorganization chart, and I have the knowledge of what these moves will mean to the functioning of the district. I have analyzed the district's current reorganization chart a long time ago because it was naturally of interest to me, and my first thought was, how can the district run effectively when it lacked the appropriate oversight to guide so many schools under its authority? The new reorg chart simply makes sense. I am concerned that there are three board members that are rushing to judgment and not giving Dr. Savage a fair opportunity to prove himself. If the rest of you vote to make these moves and they don't have positive results, they are not etched in stone. But if you afford him the opportunity he needs, then he will demonstrate that he should become the permanent superintendent. If we have positive results, you will have been instrumental in making that happen. You may be very aware that I am tied to the community, and that I have my fingers on the pulse of the thoughts of a lot of parents, residents, and organizations, and like never before, we are watching. So when board members send out bashing emails, Patrica, about Dr. Savage, I want you to know.
Thank you, Ms. Nystrom. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Harlan Parish. I'd just like to take a few minutes to share with the board. I've been watching, a number of my compatriots from the business community are here, and we've been watching the...
I'm tall.
Let me tilt it up, sorry. A little taller than the last one. We have been watching the board meetings over the last several months, and, you know, it's been highly dysfunctional. A lot of the information we're seeing, I couldn't imagine running my business that way. I think we all need to be pulling together right now, certainly with all the change that's taking place. I'd just like to address, and just some of the recent comments that I've heard from the business community, and what I have taken from listening to the meetings, I would think it's highly important that we do not go backwards from the success that we've seen, particularly over the last five to eight years. Been tremendous progress with graduation rates and the like. And so I think it's very important that each of you needs to take your responsibility seriously as we move forward. You know, I saw the last meeting where this reorganization, which, you know, Dr. Savage is a very experienced individual, makes a lot of sense in certain regards to look at making changes, but I would, from a business perspective, I would say, listen, take a look, but you've got a permanent superintendent coming in in the future with a national search. I don't think it's fair right now. I think right now, we need to be collaborating and working with staff to open up schools, which we just did a couple days ago, to make sure with this spike in the pandemic, that we're looking forward in handling that, addressing student learning and achievement, given the pandemic that we've been faced with, and to determine how best to spend nonrecurring federal and state dollars to address our pressing needs. While there, of course, are going to be a need for various operational decisions and positions to be replaced, it seems that a substantial reorganization of the district executive staff should not occur until the new superintendent is seated. Again, I think it's important, Dr. Savage may have some great ideas, but I think this school board, it's incumbent upon you that you need to make sure there's a rational basis upon which to make these changes, with consideration on the budgetary impact of the proposed plan. And I'd also urge each of you to request data that illustrates the need to make these changes, to look into what metrics will be employed to determine whether those pair points are being addressed, and finally include a timeline for the measurement of these things. So again, I'm up here speaking from the standpoint, my two kids went through the Lee County School District many years ago. I have no skin in the game today from that perspective, but I do from the business perspective, because education is the economic lifeblood and vitality of this community. And I'm very concerned as we move forward to make sure that each of you are making the right decisions, along with the Lee County School District staff, to ensure that we're going to have a very successful educational organization going forward, because we're not going to be able to maintain our associates and employees, or putting their kids in the school system, or recruit new businesses to this area if we're not keeping an eye towards that. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon. My name's Gary Griffin.
Mr. Griffin, just hold on one second. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Gary Griffin. I'm a member of the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools. I'm with BNI Contractors. We're also a large employer in the area. But I also want to point out, I'm a graduate of the Lee County School System. I have two kids, a wife, my father. They're all graduates of Lee County Schools. And I have a mother, a sister, and a grandmother, who have been employed as teachers consistently in the district since the 1920s. So like you, I care about this for maybe perhaps business reasons, but for very personal reasons, too. I just want to see our students be served in this district to be successful. So having said that, I'm going to start by building some credibility by saying the obvious. This board has an incredibly important decision to make in the next year, and that is the selection of your next superintendent. And I pray for you, because I know how important that's going to be to the success of this district, and I wish you well, and I look forward to hopefully supporting that effort to make sure we draw the most qualified candidate we can draw. And I know you guys will do a great job with it. So having said the obvious, secondly, I do not wish to offer my opinion on this organizational chart versus your current one. I do not consider myself an expert in education. I think I'm a very good manager and a good business person. But I will just say, if you do implement this plan, I hope it can be implemented quickly enough so that it could be, one, filling positions, which we know takes time. I can tell you, I've been trying to fill the service manager position for six months, and I had a qualified candidate, and he couldn't find a house, so he's not taking the job. It's tough. So filling new positions, implementing the new plan, and then having that plan produce results that support students, teachers, and the district is a huge challenge if you're truly going to bring in a new superintendent within the next few months, or the next year, I would say. I'm sure that's your goal, six months to a year. So that's my concern, is whether it's practical to really start producing results, even if it is a superior plan. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And the last thing I want to say is just, one, you guys have an incredibly difficult job. You're underpaid. You know that better than I do. You do this because you love the district. As Harlan said, we do want to see unanimity, or at least strong support towards whatever decision you make. And we just want to see that in the business community. It has not always been there. You know it. The public knows it. It hurts our district when it happens. I think it hurts the morale within the district. Please show that unanimity. We will be behind you whatever decision you make, but please pull together.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Martin, and I've, three days ago, passed 50 years of service in public higher education. So I'm here both because I have longevity, and I have had some experience in several different settings, with the relationship between the public school system and the university systems I've been involved in. First, let me say, as an observer, this district has made enormous progress in recent years. All the objective measures certainly point to that. And those of us who observe it less objectively and more subjectively have witnessed the strength of students coming out of this district as they've entered post-secondary education institutions. And for that, you should take some great pride. And I don't think that should be obscured by any of the tensions of the moment. I join my colleagues, Gary and Harlan, in making the case that the first and highest priority for this board is to move forward with dispatch for a national search for the next superintendent. That's not to suggest that internal or local candidates couldn't qualify, but I believe it's essential to do a national search expeditiously for a couple of reasons. One is, it gives everyone a chance to know more about how good this district is in the very process of doing the search. Secondly, it offers the opportunity to add greater diversity, along with excellence, to the governance of the system. And I think that should not be lost. And I hope, in the process of doing that, the conversations that go on, and the tensions that have been exhibited from time to time, don't obscure the larger message, which is real progress has been made. And real progress has been made on behalf of the students of the district and all those who benefit from a very strong school system. And I fear sometimes that the public buzz has a tendency to obscure those realities. Please know, I join my colleagues from the board of the Foundation for Lee County Schools in saying, we will be here to be as supportive in any way we can of this process. But I can't think of a more important moment now to focus on finding the next superintendent. Some reorganization may or not be beneficial. I will tell you this from my own experience. Whenever you add a new player to the team, to some extent, it changes the roles of all others. So to make a change now and add a new major player could, in some ways, end up with adverse consequences that had not been fully anticipated. But nonetheless, I will come back to the point. The first order of business is to get the next leader, and then empower that next leader to continue the progress that's been made in this district over the last several years. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that there was no one else out there that would like to speak that did not have an opportunity to get their cards.
Saying none, we will close public comments. And I just want to say, I appreciate everyone coming out today. It means a lot to you taking your time out and being here. Also, I want to say, we are beginning our search. So August 24, we will begin that process and lay in a foundation for that to start taking place. So we will be meeting together, coming up with the dates and the timelines, the community part of that portion that we're going to be bringing in to help us with that decision. So we will be, we will be beginning that. So on to our next part of this. Our unfinished business and table items. The motion to take from the table, the motion that was made on July 27, 2021 by Ms. Fisher for approval of the revision and adoption of job descriptions for the FY 2022, 2021, 2022 school year budget cycle. You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approves the motion to take from the table, the motion that was made on July 27.
So, Madam Chair, the first thing?
I'm repeating it. Yes, I am, and I just apologize.
The first thing is, somebody needs to make the motion to take it from the table.
Right. Yes, please.
I move to remove the approval to revise and adopt job descriptions as part of the fiscal year 22 budget from the unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda and place same back on the table for debate and vote.
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens.
Madam Chair, for this particular motion, there's no discussion. We'll just move forward with the vote.
Can you please record your vote? And this is strictly to take it off the table. Are we waiting for...
It doesn't log me in.
Okay. Can you please tell her we are?
Yes.
So seven, seven zero, motion passes. Ms. Patrica?
So while I have the floor, I'd like to amend the motion currently on the table. I move to adopt all recommended job descriptions except Deputy Superintendent Business Operations, Deputy Superintendent Student Achievement, Chief Strategic Engagement Officer, Chief Performance Officer, and paralegal. This amendment will accomplish several goals. It will allow us to not consider those items Dr. Savage does not want us to consider today. Further, I intend to follow up this motion with a motion to adopt the Chief Strategic Engagement Officer job description, and yet another motion to adopt the paralegal job description. Doing so will allow discussion, debate, and vote on items that, in my estimation, should be considered separately.
Madam Chair? I'm confused.
Just a second, please. Ms. Thompson, do you get all of that?
No.
Okay.
I can send you the language.
Please send that.
Share it with the rest of us, so we can understand.
If I can get the language as well.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Can I also get the language?
Yes. Okay.
So, yeah, there's a lot that was just right there. So the first one, so you want to approve, you amended it to approve the job descriptions with the removal of?
Deputy Superintendent Business Operations.
Okay.
Deputy Superintendent Student Achievement, Chief Strategic Engagement Officer, Chief Performance Officer, and Paralegal.
What was the third one? I'm sorry. After student achievement?
Deputy Superintendent Student Achievement.
No, the next one.
Chief Strategic Engagement Officer.
And do I have a second on that?
Madam Chair, I believe the superintendent would like to change his recommendation, since this is his recommendation. So, Dr. Savage?
Yes, if I may, just due to the fact that this had been a tabled item...
I'm sorry, Mr. Pre-Bruno, we have a motion. That was just a motion that was just put out there from Ms. Patrica.
It's a motion to amend the recommendation by the superintendent. The superintendent wants to change his recommendation prior to that motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. The, as I indicated in the email to the board members, I had, because I could not modify the tabled item because it had been tabled, I had to wait until it had been brought back to the table today. The three job descriptions that I had, had, am pulling today are the Deputy Superintendent Business Operations, the Deputy Superintendent Student Achievement, and the Chief Performance Officer. Those three job descriptions, I have, I indicated in the email to the board, and I am pulling from this item.
So hearing from the superintendent, the motion, the amended motion, do I have a second on that, so we can have a discussion?
So at this point, the superintendent has revised his recommendation. Given the revision of the recommendation, if Ms. Patrica wants to correct her motion to reflective of the superintendent's current recommendation.
I'm sorry, Attorney Pre-Bruno, you know I'm a stickler for the rules, and I'm not clear on how Dr. Savage can amend a recommendation that's already on the table.
He has...
And that was what I sought to do with my amendment, was to amend his recommend, amend the motion in accordance with what he wants discussed today.
Well, he's, he is revising what he wants discussed today. So there was a recommendation that was made. He has decided that he's going to revise that recommendation with his, which is within the superintendent's purview to do. And at this point, he has made the change to the recommendation, and if Ms. Patrica wants to move forward with her motion to amend based on the superintendent's new recommendation. If the superintendent is making a change in the recommendation, there's no need to vote on things that he is no longer requesting from the board.
Madam Chair?
Correct.
Ms. Gittens? Okay. In my understanding, then, the first motion was just to take it off the table.
Correct.
And the superintendent, it was the superintendent's motion anyway, so we should be able to discuss that. And, Ms. Patrica, I don't think it was right that you said, "I have the floor." While I have the floor, I can say this, because the next step should have been for the superintendent to address the motion that was on the table.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, I agree with what Ms. Gittens said. All of a sudden, I was hearing Board Member Patrica say, "Since I have the floor," and I didn't hear you, Madam Chair, recognize her to speak, and plus, since all of us had been notified by Dr. Savage that prior to our vote, he was pulling these items, I didn't understand why she would be bringing up things that we already knew were going to be pulled. And I might also add that this is not unusual in the former administration. We often had items that the superintendent pulled before we discussed it. So I would, logic tells me that some of the things Ms. Patrica brought up have already been pulled, and as our attorney said, you can't, why are you going to vote on, you can't vote on something that's been pulled. And so what I'm looking to hear is, I think maybe there were two things that she brought up, but it sounds like a logical way to deal with this to me.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
So, Mr. Pre-Bruno, at this time?
So if Dr. Savage would restate his current recommendation, and then you can entertain any motion from the board.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is the approval to revise and adopt the job descriptions as part of the fiscal year 22, 2021, 22 school year budget.
Okay. Mr. Pre-Bruno, can you please address the first issue, so we can move past this, where Ms. Patrica has stated a motion prior to Dr. Savage?
We currently have a motion on the table.
So, Ms. Patrica, your motion was to amend and remove certain things from the superintendent's recommendation. The superintendent has the opportunity, prior to your motion, to make his recommendation. He made his recommendation and advised the board that he is pulling certain items from that recommendation. So now the superintendent has stated his recommendation, and Madam Chair can go ahead and entertain any motion. I did offer you, if you wanted to move forward now with a revised motion to amend, given the superintendent's recommendation that's within your purview to do.
I understand that, but we currently have a motion on the table.
I don't, I don't know if that motion was seconded.
It was pulled from the table.
Well, the motion to table.
And that was voted. So the motion that was tabled, which is the motion that was made last week, is currently on the table.
Right.
The board needs to act on that motion without the superintendent's changed recommendations, because that is the item that's on the table right now for our consideration.
Ms. Patrica, there have always, there have often been times where the superintendent can go ahead and say, "I would like to change my recommendation," which is what he has done in this circumstance. He has said, based on, he sent an email this morning saying, "I would like to pull these items." So this is no longer his recommendation. He's changing his recommendation. Now the board needs to vote on the recommendation of the superintendent as it stands at this time.
So after restating his new recommendation based on the information that we received this morning, we will just then take a vote on that, to approve or not approve.
Unless Ms. Patrica wants to amend, or, you know, as she said before, if she wants to do that, she's free to do that, or the board can just do as it normally will do, which is to vote on the superintendent's recommendation.
Madam Chair, is there discussion, and if we're going to do the latter?
So you would do it as you normally would do. Someone would make a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation. There would be a second. It would be open to discussion, and then you would have your vote.
I make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommended, adjusted recommendations as stated.
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens, and thank you, Ms. Vaughn. And is there discussion on that? Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I'm going to try to do something a little bit different than Ms. Patrica. I move to amend the motion on the table by breaking it into three separate motions. The first motion would be the first section that is referred to as revision of. The second would be the adoption of the to-be-determined assistant directors, well, everything down to the third section, which would be... Well, everything down to the third section, which would be the superintendent's recommendation for adoption of the Chief Strategic Engagement Officer. So, I actually, for clarity, have broken this down so I can distribute it, so people can see what my motion is.
Thank you.
So, were you making a motion for this?
I moved to amend, yes. And I'm looking for a second, but I want you to be able to see...
Thank you.
My motion.
Thank you.
Second?
No.
Okay, so we have a second for, we have a second on this, so now we will have discussion. It was seconded by, and Ms. Thomas, do you have that as well? So, it was seconded by Ms. Patrica, and now we're in discussion, please.
Correct.
I have a question.
Please, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, for the sake of clarity, since we're saying that, superintendent's motion was on the floor. Can you just simplify this and say, "How is this different from the superintendent's motion?" Just those items.
So, this, this one, Ms. Gittens, is broken, I think what, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Morgan, but I believe what she's saying is she would like to vote on it on three separate chunks, is my understanding. So, the first one is the revision of, and she lists the specific jobs that she's talking about. The second one is another set of job descriptions. And then she has the third one, which includes some of the things that the superintendent has pulled. So whatever's left and what has not been pulled is what you would be voting on, is my understanding.
No, I understand that, but this is yet another process to the same thing that we've been trying to do. Here's the organizational chart. Either you want it, or you don't, or even as Ms. Patrica said, it's fine if we pull this, 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 and this. Then we receive this, it's a whole different conglomeration of it. And honestly, I don't think I'm dense by any means, but this is a lot to take in and to figure out how this is all sorted out. So, I'm asking to simplify it by saying, today, we need to just vote on the things, the positions that, that we need right now. The discussion last week, when we talked about it before, what do we need right now to move forward? We've already started school. What is going by the wayside because we don't have someone in a particular position to do it? And we went around and around about that. So, I would like to know, just simply, even though you sorted this into three different categories, what do you really want to take off the table from the superintendent's recommendation? Ms. Patrica gave four things, five things. What do you want to take off the table?
And please, if I, I'm going to have Ms. Morgan respond to that, if you don't mind, please.
My plan isn't to...
Then I will call you, Ms. Vaughn.
I'm not intending to take anything off the table. I think there are three separate conversations that the board needs to have. The first conversation is about a revision, and I've looked at the revisions, and they're all minor revisions. So, I, you know, from my point of view, there's not a lot to discuss there. On the other hand, the second section is a lot of new job descriptions. We have not heard from the division chiefs about the need for these jobs. We haven't heard about how they will change the organization if they are implemented. Our only authority as a board is to determine what positions we will approve. Once those positions are approved, it is the superintendent's purview. Therefore, I think we need to have a better understanding, a presentation by the superintendent or his division chiefs about the need for these and how they fit in the organization. And then the third one, the third group I'm separating out, is, is essentially about, well, it's down to now Chief Engagement Officer. But I would also like to have a separate discussion and a separate vote on that. So, that is the purpose of my motion. And I'm not taking anything off the table. Everything is on the table, but I'm asking for separate conversations because I think the information required for each is, is different.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, and Ms. Morgan just simplified because, and thank you for, because this is quite a list. Thank you for actually printing this out. The top two groups that she has on here remain the same. But when you take out what Dr. Savage pulled, it looks like the one that Ms. Morgan and possibly other board members want to discuss is down to Chief Strategic Engagement Officer. I also want to add that, two things. First of all, that I disagree with my colleague, Ms. Gittens, in that let's just go for the ones that we need right this minute. I, at least that was my understanding. And I think, we, we have spent way too long. It's, it's very, I guess I'm an impatient individual. And, you know, things move at a snail's pace. And I think, you know, it behooves us to look at everything, not just what we needed yesterday or as schools started. And I also think as, as a board, it doesn't matter that Dr. Savage has been chosen by us as a superintendent with all of the rights and privileges of any superintendent. Yes, he's interim, but let's face it, we haven't even gotten to the first round with Ray and Associates. And so, are we going to sit for six to nine months? If this is something that the board wants to move ahead with, this reorganization plan, we need to move on this and quit playing around. I don't see a problem with dividing it into three parts. Maybe that'll make things move more smoothly.
Thank you. Is there any other conversation? Ladies? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I would like to suggest that we just move, move forward in discussion on Ms. Morgan's motion, beginning with the revision of those existing job descriptions that have been updated and are needed in our district and school locations.
Madam Chair? So then, Ms. Gittens?
And, and I'm sorry, but I disagree with that. I think the issue right now, when we're looking at revision of job descriptions, we're talking time. We're talking going back to the drawing board and starting over with things and getting this input and that input. That's time. The adoption of the number three, I think, is, to me, the most important at this point, if we could deal with that. When we're looking at those items, there's only one left, because the superintendent took off the first, the second, and the fourth, and there's only the Strategic Engagement Officer that is left. And, so, I would think we would take a look at those things, first of all. And let me, let me just say, I agree with Ms. Vaughn. We do not have, and if I need to say it at every meeting, I, I'm prepared to do that. There is no job description in the Lee County School District that says interim superintendent. There is a job description that says superintendent. And as she said, with all the rights and privileges thereof, I'm sitting here thinking, if someone out there in, in the nation is watching to see if they would like to apply to come here, and if they see how we treat our superintendents, whoever is sitting in that seat. I, I don't know if I, if I were them, if I would say I would do it, because I'm going to have a fight at everything I want to do that's different than what's happening now. So, when we talk about giving a good, putting forth a good, you know, look for this district, we have to show, and people are always saying, "We have to show we can get along." We have not yet learned how to take what you think, what I think, and sit and discuss it like adults and figure out, "I don't want, I don't think this may work, why? This won't work, why? Not the personality, not the person, but if we do this, we'll have to do this and this." Take personalities and people's names out of it, and look at, what are we doing that's going to help children? We need to move on with, for example, the risk management. I think that's critical.
Yep, Ms. Gittens? I don't think that's...
I, I am getting on...
If we can come back to where we're...
Okay, but please, please just stop cutting me off, let me finish, okay?
I'm not trying to cut you off, I'm just trying to bring us back to the job descriptions here.
Okay, and I am talking about the job descriptions. And some people are saying the superintendent should not have that ability. But there is a screening and selection adminis, of administrative positions. And it is a human resources practice. It was originated by Georgiana McDan, McDaniel's. It, the origination was 2003, it was revised in 2020. And it does say exemptions to selection procedures. Executive position, the position of executive director or higher may be exempt from the screening and selection procedures outlined in this document. Such persons are recommended to the school board by the superintendent to fill positions subject to the approval of the school board. But in other words, the superintendent still has the right. And the last thing I'm going to say is what I said before. We set policy, he does process. The last two superintendents, and I know because I worked in the district, came in, they made changes to their chiefs, they made changes to their organization to suit what would be best for them to work. And they were interim at the time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gittens. I'm going to ask Dr. Savage to please, can you please, you have, you received this list as well? You're looking at that. Can you please tell, state what is, because you've already pulled the others, certain ones. But I know that where we're at right now, in the beginning of school, because that's what we have to be concentrating on. We have to make sure that we are, do what we need to do to keep these schools running. Right now, the, I believe that maybe the top part, the revisions, I know there were, I believe, nine or so that absolutely we need it for the beginning of the school year. Can you please, for us to make sure that we are running in a proper manner, which ones on this, on this list needs to be approved? So that they can move forward and do the day-to-day operations?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may. So, the way that these are currently set up, just want to clarify, just take care of the simple one first. The only new job description that, that was added as a part of the reorganization conversation, the only one that remains on the item, is the Chief Strategic Engagement Officer. That's the only job description that is a part of the organization, reorganization concept in any way. All of the other job descriptions that you have in front of you were put forward by H, by HR to support the budget, the special budget that was adopted, for which this was tabled. So, in the meeting that this was tabled, these are all job descriptions that show up. So, what, to get to your question, what I'm doing is reconciling the effective date of when these positions start for the new ones, as well as just the revisions. Any of the ones, I'm, I'm trying to reconcile the start dates relative to those each individual positions, some of which, you know, have people in their names assigned to them when they're existing ones that are being revised, and then others that are adopted to start. I'm just trying to see when those start dates are listed within the budget document. So, this is the budget document from the special meeting, just for your own reference. So, for anyone who's trying to do what I'm doing right now, it's the July 27th special meeting where we adopted the budget, the tentative budget. In that, in that meeting, there was a fiscal year 22 recommended position changes within the tentative budget. This includes the reclassifications, revision, revised job descriptions. That was in item B4, it's that proposed fiscal year 22 tentative budget. So, it had a four-page attachment. And so, I'm just trying to reconcile, they don't match up perfectly, so there are different start dates for these different positions. So, for example, even though it's listed as an adoption of a position, the paralegal, so while it might look like that's an adoption, it actually had a revised start date for the individual as part of that reclassification, and it says effective date would be September 9th. So, while some of these have effective dates into August, that's, so that each one has a different, potentially different effective date for each of these particular positions. So, that's essentially what I would have to do. I would say that, just to kind of clarify, these were all part of the budget revision process, which we do annually, every year. We, we revise, we eliminate jobs, we reclassify, those are put forward, and they are, they are covered at that particular meeting. So, that's, but this was tabled, and thusly, it's kind of putting it out of link with, with that piece. So, I just wanted to draw the board's attention to that.
And then, just the one, real quick one that you mentioned, the paralegal, it's not a new person, it's a person who is already a paralegal, but making her, making her a paralegal. She's already in-house.
That's correct. So, so when it's a reclassification, the particular, they would be impacted by the approval of a job description. So, if the job description that maybe did not exist at that time, if that person's being reclassified, they would need for the job description to be approved before they could be transferred into that position. So, in this particular case, that's what I was, there's, there's a number of them here. And so, I was kind of going through each one to show where was the effective date, which is in the far flush right side of that column in that budget document.
And then I have a quick, yes, Ms. Morgan?
Could someone please tell me where this is in the, in the budget document that Dr. Savage is talking about?
Dr. Savage?
I'm happy to, where it's at in the budget?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so if you were to, if, to reconcile, can, as I am doing here, the July 27th, five o'clock special meeting, if you were in that agenda, you would look at B4, and it's the second attachment. It's the fiscal year 22 recommended position changes, tentative budget attachment. It's a four-page attachment. Just to orient to those who might be looking at it. The first page is new positions, so you'll see some of the adoptions of new positions show up there. Those would not have a person in them, associated to them. The second page has requested reclassifications, so this would, this would indicate existing staff members who are in a current approved job description that would be transferring to a newly approved job description, and the effective date to the far right. The third page would be requested transfers of positions. And that has an individual in it, and then the fourth is eliminated positions. And those are just positions, not people and, and associated to that.
Okay. Ms. Javonelli?
Okay, so, my concern is that in the past, we've never scrutinized the recommendations of the superintendent annually, and they do change and get reclassified. So, I question why, why this is happening at this time. My question will be back to the superintendent. Would you like for us to just stick with your proposal and take out the, the three pulled? And continue on, I mean, in, in light of time, and, and people need to get on with their life and their jobs. I recommend, you know, less, what's the superintendent want to do? I mean, that's what we're supposed to be doing here, right, is your recommendation?
So, currently, Ms. Morgan?
So, I stand corrected. I guess we don't have that conversation about the job descriptions. And I should have brought that up as part of the budget process. So, I would guess I would have to amend my amendment. I guess I, what I'm going to, I'm going to do is withdraw it, and then make another motion for an amendment, just to address the Strategic Engagement Officer position.
Sometimes, Ms. Morgan, sometimes it's easier just to do a motion to divide. So, just divide that and just take that, so it's not an amendment, we're not going through that process. So, you're withdrawing your motion to amend?
Yes, oh, you're just, okay, yeah, so, I've withdrawn my motion to amend, and now I make a motion to divide the Chief Strategic Engagement Officer position from the rest of the recommendation.
My seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Vaughn?
Thank you. It's your discussion.
Ms. Thomas, did you get that? I just want to make sure that you are...
So, the motion to divide does not have any discussion, we go straight to the vote? So the motion to divide does not have any discussion. We go straight to the vote?
So just for clarity, we'll just be voting on everything else in the motion except for that one item?
That's correct.
You're just, it's what you're voting on is just to separate the two, and they go straight to a vote, and then after that, you will vote on the recommendations, and then you will vote on the Chief Strategic Engagement Officer?
We divided it.
But we haven't voted on the divide yet, is what we're doing right now.
Correct. This is, this, the only thing we're going to be voting on right now is the motion that's at hand is to divide that, and then we will come back and do the motion for both of the others. So, and that will be a hand vote, Ms. Thomas? Okay, so, uh, may I have a hand vote in doing the divide?
Yeah, I had a question.
She has a question.
There's no discussion.
Oh.
Do you have a question for Mrs. Dupree Bruno?
No.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Okay. So do we have, um, can I see a show of hands again, please? Or the motion to divide? Just those two? Thank you, and Ms. Gittens?
No.
Okay, seven, six to one. The motion passes.
So at this point, you have the Dr. Savage's recommendation on all of the items, with the exception of the Chief Strategic Engagement Officer?
And I make a motion then that we approve his recommendation, except for the Chief Strategic Engagement Officer.
You already did that with the motion to divide, so the motion would be a motion to approve Dr. Savage's recommendation, Part 1, which is all of the other job descriptions.
Well, I revise that. My motion is to approve Dr. Savage's motion, Part 1.
Okay. Now, do we have, uh, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Fisher, and now we have discussion.
Discussion. Okay, so I have a question. And that is regarding those job descriptions that have TBD on them and don't have a job code or a JDE. What is the difference between those and the ones that already have a job code and a JDE? If someone could answer that.
Dr. Savage?
Just make sure I understand the question for the TBD. You just want me to pull one of those specific ones. You're looking at the specific areas where the job code is not currently supported, where you're just looking where it's to be determined?
Right.
So why are they, why is it not yet, why is there not an assigned job code?
Right.
Uh, I could have HR make sure to clarify, but I would say, um, my understanding is that they may not assign that until it has actually been board-approved, but I will verify that if you would like.
Thank you.
But I believe that is what the reason is.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
So I thought that this was the appropriate time to discuss the paralegal job description. I, I can't support this because I don't know how the paralegal position fits into the overall legal budget. And I, I know that we approved it. And I was very well aware when we did the tentative budget that we approved that position. But I thought that my authority as a board member came in the approval of the job description, so had I been able to se- separate that out, I certainly would have supported the rest. But, um, until we have our individual meetings with the board attorney, and we have a discussion as a board on this item next week, I can't, I can't support it today. I'm just not clear on the direction of that department at this point.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion regarding this motion? Mr. Javonelli?
Well, just on what Ms. Patrica just stated. I mean, we don't, presently, we don't have a paralegal in-house, correct?
Correct.
A real paralegal.
So we have somebody who is a certified paralegal who is not working in that capacity, but is working with legal.
Okay. And that, is that person that, this position for that person? Or this is an additional position?
So-
Out of curiosity.
So-
We had a legal secretary that was, that's, that position's already being occupied as a legal secretary, and she would now become a paralegal, and that would just give her a bump in pay, basically, because the position's already-
No, Ms. Um, Ms. Javonelli, let them explain that, because it's not just, it's not just a bump in pay, it's duties and other things that they would be-
Of course, but, yes.
So, Dr. Savage, can you please?
I'll, I'll explain this. So the paralegal that came in the budget process was the paralegal position that was under the board attorney's office. We have an, another individual who is currently working as a, an executive secretary, but who's actually doing paralegal work. And this would allow us to move her to the appropriate position for her as a paralegal in legal services.
Right. That's my understanding.
Well, and just to clarify, when we have now, uh, just, because I think it's easy to conflate these, there, there's kind of separate pieces. So the, from a budgetary standpoint, when we're approving the unit, or in this case, a reclassified unit, it is both tethering the job to the person, to the budget, in kind of a concise way. In, in what is in front of you here, you, you not only had as part of the budget action approval of that piece, but it required the approval of this job description, which is a separate and distinct action, it, which is requisite. It must, it must be approved in order for the person to fulfill that job description. So the item in front of you today is not a person. It is a job description that, that is a part of the reclassification within the budget that a person could fulfill, that, that this person is intended to fulfill as a budget action, bringing all those together. But today, the item that you have in front of you is specifically that job description, which certainly would impact that individual and, and that budgetary action that, that was approved. So just, I just want to make sure I'm clarifying that piece.
Thank you. So actually, so we have a person that's actually doing the duties of a paralegal without the title and without the pay.
That's correct.
So why would we want, not want to do that? And make them, get, have them being paid for what they're doing, the job? We have so many people that work very hard in this district that aren't getting paid for the duties and jobs that they're doing. So this is just rectifying something that needed to happen, let's say, maybe five years ago, or whatever. So I, I don't see the problem with it. Okay, thank you. Thought so.
Okay, is there any other discussion? If not, um, I would like for us to go ahead and take a vote. And would this need to be a hand vote again, Ms. Thomas? Okay, so can we have a vote on the super- well, actually, superintendent, if you will please re-
Yes, please.
Restate, restate your recommendation, so it's clear what we are voting on.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is the-
Thank you.
-approval to revise in a job, job descriptions as part of the fiscal year 22, 2021, 2022 school year budget, Part 1.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing there was no more conversation, could we please then take a vote? All in favor, please, raise your hand. Ms. Patrica?
No.
No? Uh, six, six to one. Thank you. Okay, so the, so that is taken care of, so now we have the next motion, if somebody wants to make another motion?
I make a motion that we would, um, adopt the superintendent's, uh, su- motion for the Chief Strategic Engagement Officer.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher? Okay, now discussion, please? Anyone for discussion? Uh, Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yeah, um, I actually wanted to make a comment that relates to this. I, I want to applaud, uh, Dr. Savage for being so well-prepared, that he could actually pull up the meeting and the number and the page for us to look at, uh, so that we wouldn't just be spinning our wheels, that we could actually, um, remind ourselves on where these things occurred. Now, I personally would like to, since this is a position that, um, we'll go with the proposed new reorg plan. Uh, I know Dr. Savage presented a very, very detailed overview, I lose track of time, several weeks ago, when, um, during a briefing. I, I think it behooves me, any, anyway, since we're looking only at this one, if he would, um, just elaborate, go back, and elaborate on your vision of how this particular position fits into, to the plan.
Madam Chair, through-
Dr. Savage, please.
All right? Okay.
Uh, I, I would just say, um, just as a point of clarification before I go into all that, I just wanted to kind of acknowledge that any reorganization con- conversation, you know, when I did present the entire concept, it really was designed to initiate the beginning of a conversation. Uh, really to engage the board and receive direction from the board. And when I say the board, I don't mean necessarily individual board members, but I would say that the board as a group, as an acting governing body, to help kind of guide, that this is a worthwhile conversation to explore. And I, and just want to remind that the three kind of options I, I kind of presented at that time were, and asked for consensus at the time. Is this a conversation we need to stop right now? That it's not the right time to have that conversation? Is it a time to, that there is good merit here, and we move slowly and methodically and strategically in the key areas? Or move full speed ahead? We like the, the entire concept, we like where it is, we like the design, the architecture of it, we understand, and, and let's move forward. So that it isn't my, you know, uh, this is what I want to do. I, I said I was comfortable with any of those three outcomes, because I understand there's seven individuals, and that you all probably have different ideas. And so for me, uh, it was just very important to gather that feedback. The prevailing opinion that I, I heard at that time through the consensus process was that there was a desire for some change, but maybe to slow it down. And so today is an example of that slowing down, uh, and really being more methodical and strategic about one piece at a time. So the item in front of you today, the Chief Strategic Engagement Officer, focuses on a very important component of our organization. How do we engage with our stakeholders? How do we engage with our families, our children, our business community, our government officials internally? How do we communicate horizontally across our organization, vertically across our organization? And not in a one-way directional of, this is our message, let us tell our story, but more to reflect on who we even are. Does every child, when they walk into the building, feel like it is their school? That this is their district? That we are their board, we are their governance team? It is really a person to bring that, that chief-level leadership to that mission. Uh, the way I've kind of portrayed this before, if, if this organization is a body, this chief engagement, uh, this is all about the skin of that organization. It binds all of us together. It's taking communications, or what's often referred to as communications, to another level, uh, to real engagement, meaningful, two-way, back-and-forth peace. So this person would carry that mantle. Now, within that organizational structure, I had some, some potential adjustments of additional areas of supervision. One area that I had mentioned in that chart was our current student assignment process. You know, instead of it being simply a transactional model of enrolling students, an opportunity to really engage with our families, to really make them feel, you know, that they better understand our, our piece. Those were things that were in the PowerPoint for examples. But this specific position, if it, if, if it were to be carried forward, I think the job description really speaks for itself in terms of the power of what it could do. And, um, and just to, even though I don't want to preview the next item, that the person being recommended for this position, I think, could really add a significant level of value in this position due to her broad experience across the organization, but really a background and area of expertise in this particular, um, some strengths that I think could really be added there. So if you'd like any additional information, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Is there any other, um, questions or comments from the board? I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I can't support it. And actually, the very last comment you made is, is probably why, Dr. Savage. Yes, I understand what you're trying to do, but then when you talk about taking something like the student assignment process and put it in with this, 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 this job, I mean, we're in the middle of, um, a major project with proximity. I don't understand, uh, how moving something like that serves the organization. I don't understand what the issue is about something like that. And that's basically my, my problem with the whole organizational change. I don't, I don't feel that you are making a case for a reason, or you're making the case to do this. You haven't given us academic reasons, operational reasons, administrative reasons to make these changes. Now, we have a communications director. There is no reason a communications director can't be doing some of what you're talking about. May not be able to do it all, but in fact, it's being done in other parts of the organization. It's not like we are creating something new. Now, with respect to the fact that you are talking about pulling somebody out of, um, leadership, you've added to your staff by putting a coordinator in this year for your office. You had a chief of staff, you've added a coordinator. It's been in the budget bef- it has not been in the budget for the last two years. It's a position that exists. And now you're going to talk, and that was an assistant principal that you put in a coordinator position. Now you're talking about taking the, um, elementary executive director out of a position that is a critical position, I think, uh, and moving her into an administrative position. How are you filling her job? Are you going to take somebody out of a school? Um, you know, there are lots of things that, that, you know, have not been discussed that suggest to me that, um, you have a vision, but I'm not sure we have a plan that everybody who's impacted by this plan has participated in and agreed to. So those are my initial comments. If I hear other things from other board members, I may choose to respond.
Can you, um, please elaborate?
Yeah, if you don't mind, uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair, through the chair. Uh, just wanted to acknowledge, um, you know, I, I can go as deep or as not. We've, because of the, the presentation that was done in July, was attempting to address some of those issues and some of the concepts to initiate this conversation. Today's really just reduced to that one job description, because in order to have one person move into a role, the, the identified chief of staff recommendation, the person who's currently occupying that role would move into this piece. As far as the specifics of which departments would have to report, you know, that was a, a, that was portrayed in the plan. It was, it was demonstrated as to, you know, during, during the complete plan with every department accounted for. It was very important to acknowledge that. But I just want to kind of touch base on one piece of this that I think was the very first comment that you had made about this, with student assignment. So the proximity plan has actually been led, in, in many ways, with a, with a key leadership role, has been actually being carried out by the person currently serving that chief of staff role. Um, that, that person has provided tremendous leadership in that particular area, helping to address many of these issues. And so it really is a natural extension to some of the work that's already been done by that individual. Uh, and in my mind, it, it fits in very well. Proximity is all about engaging our community. It really fits in very well within this particular, um, area as well.
And I understand that, but here's the problem. Here's what I'm hearing from staff. Staff is incredibly stressed. They're exhausted. They have come off a really tough year. They got a very short vacation. They're gearing up for the coming year. They're hearing that there's going to be a change at all levels of the organization, because as these plans that you put forward play out, people are going to be, be affected at multiple levels. They are, they don't know, they have not been engaged in any of the conversations about how their work, uh, aligns with other departments, what the goal is with respect to realignment. And then they're looking at, when the new superintendent comes, when your replacement comes in, that that person may not, in fact, want those positions, want the org chart positioned in that way with all of those departments. I understand at the very top level what you're trying to accomplish. What I'm resisting is the lack of what I think is transparency and conversation, collaboration about the impacts that it has throughout all levels of the organization. Staff is telling me, they're exhausted, they will do whatever you ask them to do, but they are looking at a job change now, and they're anticipating that there will be another one when the new superintendent comes on site. Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, um, a couple things in response to what Ms. Morgan said. First of all, again, we're the board, and we're the ones that now, and later, when we have a different, when we have the permanent superintendent, we're the ones that ultimately, um, approve these changes. And the other thing that concerns me about what Ms. Morgan said is that, um, she, you know, I, I'm not trying to denigrate staff, but I am going to put this in the view of a teacher of 38 years. A teacher in this district, and it happened multiple times last year, a bunch of teachers, oh, no, we need you at virtual school. One day, you're in virtual school. A teacher in, let's say, a high school, that's where I spent my time. Oh, Ms. Vaughn, you teach reading as well as English- Oh, Ms. Vaughn, you teach reading as well as English. We really have so many reading teachers. We're going to combine your AP classes, which are small, and give you a reading class. And so on and so forth. The teachers last year also, on a weekly basis, once students started coming face-to-face from home connect, I had teachers telling me every week, I need to look and see who's turning up in my classroom, because we didn't last year follow through with what we said. If you're in virtual, leave virtual, you're in for the semester. No, that's not what happened. If you're, you can't come back and forth. We have certain deadlines. That didn't happen. But you know what? The teachers, who had no input in that, dealt with it. And they dealt with it like champs. Now, our administrators are a talented group, and they'll adjust. Change comes hard. But they're a talented group. They have more talents than just one narrow avenue. They don't have to accept a job if it's offered to them, if they think, no, I'd rather stay, or, you know, maybe they don't have a choice, because maybe their job is eliminated. But hey, if you want a job, here are the positions. Somebody's got to make the decisions in this. And the final thing, since I know I'm running really long on this, is we're not considering who's going to be in this position, that's backward. We're considering how does this fit for the welfare of this district? It's important to look at the vertical, but a couple of years ago, Dr. Atkins talked about the horizontal. We can't just go vertical. Academics can't work without finance and without operations and transportation. This is not, here's vertical, this is your job, you're going to have it forever until you move up within that job. We can adjust, and we need, as a board, to quit looking at, well, who's this going to hurt? Oh, I've known this person for 40 years, and I want to do by this person, who's my very favorite person in the world. No, that's not what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Gittens?
I'd like to ask my colleagues a rhetorical question. If the superintendent had presented this without the administrative personal change, and it was presented as a list of jobs and job descriptions, this is why I say it's rhetorical, would it have made a difference in your decision today? And I say to the superintendent, in future, it may be easier for you and all of us to present it as, here is job one, two, three, and four. Can we do those particular jobs? Because what has happened now, we've crossed over into the personal side of it, instead of, do we need this job? Now we're looking at, do we need this job with this person in it, instead of just, do we need this job? I am asking my colleagues to think about it as, do we need this job? And I personally think, I have said for, this is my third year doing this, communication, if you know from the first day I sat down here, I said, communication is our problem. And one thing that Dr. Savage explained when he presented his whole plan to us is how he was configuring things so everyone knew who to communicate with, and who you would go to for this, and who you go to for that. And I think that the shifts that he is making is going to help it, help us to do that. We've got to communicate more, which creates better transparency. But let's look at the position and not the person. So in future, I would suggest you do it a little bit differently.
Is there any other, Dr. Savage, did you want to say, Ms. Fisher?
I just have a question. So right now, our discussion is on this one position.
That is correct. That's the only thing that's on the floor right now, is the motion to accept this.
And then I'm going to reserve my comments for later.
Dr. Savage, Ms. Patrick, and I'm going to come back to you.
So my concern is how, this position is not in the budget, and we talked about this yesterday. And so as much as I want to focus just on this position, which is what you've asked us to do, I can't do that without looking at the larger picture and the impact on other positions. And it's my understanding that you would seek not to fill the COO role, and looking at our sister districts across the state, and when I say sister districts, I mean those that are similar size to us. I think there's one that doesn't have a chief operating officer position. Some of them have split that position into two, and they all report directly to the superintendent. So we're currently without a COO and an executive director in that department. So I don't, I don't know where the money comes from to support this, and that gives me great pause.
Dr. Savage?
I'm happy to respond. Actually, I had two items that I wanted to make sure I addressed, I think that addresses that, as well as Ms. Morgan had mentioned a similar issue there. So I'll start with the monetary side. This is all considered cost-neutral, in the sense that these are all repurposed positions within our current existing budget. So I'll start with the coordinator, as mentioned, the superintendent's office. That was as part of an over-million-dollar reduction I'd done in the operations division. One of the coordinator positions, it was a part of that work, was repurposed to the superintendent's office to fulfill the same type of job that had performed by Ms. Sanders, who I'm sure you're all familiar with. That was the same type of job description that did exist for a significant portion of Dr. Atkins' tenure. And I simply brought that position back, but instead of asking for more money, we used funding through the operations savings of, again, over a million dollars in the budget savings, so that it would not just be cost-neutral, but it would actually be giving money back to the, back into our schools. As far as the chief positions, again, that is accurate to say that as the funding for the, again, we're not talking now the job description, but the funding for the job description, for the job, that a person would fulfill, is that second recommendation. I think it is appropriate to address that. Yes, it's true, the chief operations role was planned to be utilized, the funding for that position would fund this position. However, that was with the understanding that a deputy superintendent of business operations would essentially be fulfilling the top-level oversight role to at least two of the current executives. So just to clarify, the way operations is structured here in this district is five departments together, five. If you go to many other organizational charts, you will find that often the operations role does not supervise all five. In fact, in some of the bigger districts, it's much less. They may have a chief facilities officer handling only those construction matters, such as in Miami-Dade and others. And so what this attempted to do in the organizational chart, but in fact, it's not necessary for the organizational chart, because we already have this structure in place. We have three executive leadership positions that supervise the five bodies of this area. And so one is the executive director of our safety, security, and emergency management. So that has executive leadership. As part of the reorganization discussion I also had with the board, I reminded really all of the chief executives and deputies, those are all executive-level positions. They are executive or higher. So really, at that executive level, that really is the reporting area for that piece that currently does report to the superintendent. We have the executive over safety, security, emergency management, which is fulfilled by Chief Newlin. We have the executive director for transportation, this piece, that's one of the budget reclassifications that occurred, that is Roger Lloyd currently. The configuration we had there was to also have food nutrition services in that particular area, to broaden that purview at that executive layer. The other executive position that was fulfilled prior by Ms. Eball was over planning, construction, and maintenance. Again, that is headed by an executive-level position, which still exists within the current adopted budget. That is just temporarily being filled by Mr. Rickenbacker until decisions were made on the reorganization piece. Just to speak to that important, and I think it kind of highlights what Ms. Morgan said. You know, as I brought to the board before, the three options, fast, slow, or not at all, the understanding, and part of the reason for showing a timeline, a proposed timeline, is because too slow can actually sometimes make it harder on the organization, because it's drawing out the pain of just not knowing. And so, but the opposite side, going too fast, too abrupt, doesn't give you enough time to engage at the deepest levels that you'd like to do in that particular piece. So just to make sure I don't have this mischaracterized, this was a body of work that exists over many months with the chief team, and then resumed once I was in this position with the chiefs, individually, collectively. We did individual briefings with each board member to go over these, with the draft job descriptions, prior to them having been through the HR apparatus. Those were all available as well, to answer questions, to unpack the understandings of this. Did a public briefing on this as well, to highlight this for the public, so that more folks could be invited to that piece. What I'm, what I have continued to ask is simply for direction, really, to say, is this a meaningful direction that the board wishes us to proceed? And if so, at what pace? And if not, if this is not the right work, as I have stated numerous times, there is no problem with stopping and working on what we have. I would say that the positions that are in front of you today, I believe, can be carried out in a neutral fashion, with our existing structure of what we have, so it wouldn't make us beholden to going through with all of the organizational shifts. These would be very minor shifts, in my mind, impacting truly just two personnel, any conversation about additional departments and so forth. That does not have to be resolved today, and doesn't have to necessarily be resolved at all. We don't have to make any of those shifts, just because they were in the proposed org chart. Again, it was the beginning of a conversation. It was not a conclusory finished product presented to you. It was simply those key few pieces.
Thank you. Ms., I'm sorry.
So just to, thank you, I appreciate the explanation. And I do, I hear what you're saying, but I also see a direct tie between the funding for this position and the funding for the COO position, which requires more change than what you're proposing here today. And I have sent you the signal that I don't believe that it's appropriate to make disruptive changes during the period of interim leadership, and that really is the work of the permanent superintendent, and those are the reasons why I can't support this.
Well, and if you will, please, because that's not at all what we're doing here today. So we're not looking at a whole reorg, or am I missing something? Because we're speaking about two period. The rest of the, what we had been shown, or had been brought to us before, that is not taking place. That has really been put on hold to really evaluate and let people get on and start doing the work, so we can get this district going.
If I could clarify?
Yes, please.
So just to respond to that, I know that that's all we're approving today. However, today's approval has significant impacts on other parts of the organization, and that's my concern. There's no plan for COO position. There's no plan for the executive director of operations. Today's approval eliminates funding for a COO, and that's not something the board has approved, because it's part of a larger organization. So I, a larger reorganization, I'm not clear on how we can approve this today without having significant impacts on other parts of the organization. So to me, today's approval is a step toward a larger reorganization plan.
Dr. Savage, then Ms. Javonelli. I'm sorry, and then Ms. Morgan.
I would just clarify, Madam Chair, through you, that, yes, the way I would have to, it's very easy to pull all these items together, the people, the positions, and the budget. Really, the budget every year, even though we adopt it, is a very fluid, dynamic picture. The intention, on my end, is always to make these cost-neutral or cost-savings, you know, redirect more money into our schools. That is always the intention. So in some cases, it may appear, while we're getting rid of the COO, that the COO is the current vacant unit that I was serving in. The three executive-level positions that are essentially, that is leading operations, but I am responsible for all of that work currently. The proposal that I had was to have two of those report to the deputy superintendent of business operations. Just to clarify, it wasn't so that they would, that was just a different structure. And you could, you could call it executive director, but it could also be called chief facilities officer, it could be called, as they are in other districts. Some folks, they actually don't refer to it as a deputy superintendent of business operations, they call it a chief operating officer, and it supervises more areas, such as finance and so forth. So the operational piece of the organization is extremely important. So this in no way says that the COO role is not significant. It's simply saying that, I would say that the work of the operations area continues and is led in various different capacities. And so when you look at each individual org chart, you will find, very rarely do two COO jobs look the same. Those jobs exist. The other piece I just want to clarify, just as it relates to the strategic plan. We mentioned earlier about this position, and what's the idea for this vision, for this position. All of these positions were designed to support the work of the current adopted strategic plan, in the area specifically. One of the three bedrocks that we're focused on in the strategic plan are family and community engagement. It touches every single part of the organization, that is the bedrock of the plan, in addition to workforce success and continuous improvement. Just want to reiterate that the strategic, that officer position is truly to try to allow those very ambitious objectives to make great progress, and communications being a part of that, that's really the intention of that position, to take the current strategic plan that is already in place and drive that work through this time period. And I would just also further suggest, during an interim period, one of the most important things we can do is engage with our community and our stakeholders, so that we, as a governance team, better understand what it is that our community, our government partners, our business partners, our families, our students, our school leaders, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our bus drivers, the more we engage with all of those folks in a strategic, coordinated fashion, and the more we receive feedback from them, in my estimation and from my experience, that can only strengthen our work in securing the best feedback that will help us in that permanent superintendent search, and just helping us, as a board, truly understand the current state of the school district.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli, and then Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that we went two years without a C, chief of operations. You filled that after Mr. Law. It went vacant for two years. This board had no problem with that at that time. No one said a word. They kept quiet, and Dr. Atkins continued running the district, and he was the chief operations officer. So we still have the chief operations officer sitting in the superintendent seat at this moment in time, if that is a big issue. Second, I don't think these are disruptive changes. I think these are changes that are drastically needed, and I've talked to many of staff members, and they're excited about seeing the change. They see that there is a business side to running this district, and there's an educational side. And really, they're very different, and they need to operate very differently, but yet collaborate accordingly. So I think that, I think it's a great idea, and I think it's something that, it's not just been, it just didn't happen with you fulfilling the seat. You told me that this has been in collaboration and discussions for a while, it just never was brought to the board by the prior superintendent. I'm not sure why, I can't answer him for that, but I can only say that this is a vision that I've seen for a very long time, and so does the community. They understand that there's a need for a business operations to run and an educational side. And it's a $2 billion budget. How do we not have to, how can we not have someone running it as a business effectively? Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, so I guess it comes down to, I don't understand what the problem is. The problem I see is operations. Operations is not running well, it's not well-managed, we don't necessarily have the right people in the right seats. That is a huge problem. And we're talking about taking money out of that area and using it to support the communications plan. Now, I appreciate the goal with respect to the communications plan, and it may be, within this current budget year, we can't accomplish everything you want to accomplish. I think you're, some of the things that you suggest are doable within the current framework. I don't think they require us to pull money out of other areas of the budget that have critical need. And honestly, given the way you speak to how you're managing your change, it's not Because I am, I come back to, I want to know what the problem is, what is it that we need to solve, and how are we using our resources to solve it? To me, the biggest problem this district has is getting these kids back on track. Everybody's committed to that, everybody's organized to do that. We just need to keep moving down that road. The other thing I want to say is, I really, I have said this before, I believe that bringing about or instituting change, whether it's slow or fast, not stop, but slow or fast, it affects the permanent search process. It affects the pool of candidates that we will attract. They will see an organization that is in a state of change, where they will have probably not an opportunity to do anything for a year and a half after they come in, because the organization will have to settle down, and then they're going to have to figure out what they want to do and who their key players will be. You're locking people into positions that this individual will not be able to impact. I just, I think- I just, I think, I do, I mean, I said this at the last meeting, I understand where you're trying to go. I do not understand the need to move so quickly when we are looking at a new superintendent spring of next year, who will be in a great position to sit down with members of the community, to sit down with staff, to sit down with teachers, families, whatever, and talk about what is it that this organization can do to better support kids in schools. And that's really what we're all about. And so, I can't, I just, I just don't think this is articulated in a way that I'm prepared to jump forward at this time.
Okay. And if I, I think, I know we're like going, I feel like we're going all over the place here. And with the, this one particular strategic engagement, and we're talking about two people, you wanting to have someone other than who's there right now as your bottom line, as the chief of staff, to work beside you, but utilizing the person that's in that position right now to utilize her skills, their skills set to make things better on the other side. So, can you, it's not about reorg, reorganize, reorganize, oh, sorry, I can't even talk now. Reorganizing every department, that is not what we are doing here. We're not sitting here, and that's not what we're discussing. So, this is not the reorg chart. We're talking about two, two, only two. Am I right?
Madam Chair, may I just clarify? Yes. So, I just want to say from my perspective, and again, just my perspective, I really value the current person in the current chief of staff role. That person is highly competent, has served this district extraordinarily well in her capacity, brings a wealth of background, noneducational expertise as well, has really served tremendous value to Dr. Atkins and to our whole chief team and to our district. You know, her leadership through the pandemic is just, it's almost, it's beyond any kind of reproach. It truly is phenomenal. So, I don't in any way want this to be perceived that there's an issue with that individual. Really, what it is, is an opportunity to place a person in that current capacity that I think could really add a lot of value as well, in a slightly different capacity, and that to benefit from the expertise that the current chief of staff has in this new role. This new role, the chief strategic engagement officer role, is a powerful leadership opportunity to capitalize on the strengths of that individual, but independent of that individual, just as an opportunity to advance our strategic plan during this year, during a critical year, we have that ability to do that. I highly would recommend to pursue this as it's presented, but at the same time, if that is not the will of the board, that is why I bring these items to the board, because I take my direction from the consensus of the board, from the majority of the board. The board directs this work, and so I'm trying to do my best to highlight these tremendous individuals, as well as these specific roles, but that really is the board's discretion.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, I think you had...
Yeah, yes. I'm just going to try to pull this together a little bit. So, Florida statute 1001.51 talks about the duties and responsibilities of the Florida district's school superintendent, who should exercise all powers and perform all duties listed in the law, provided that, in doing so, he or she shall advise and counsel with the district school board to make sound recommendations, nominations, proposals, and reports required by law to be acted on by the district school board. So, I think that we have a concern here that we need to be focusing on a few things. Those would be getting schools started again, dealing with the impending increasing pandemic situation, monitoring our progress with the district strategic plan, looking at process and policies, and having the superintendent for the interim help us with the search for the permanent superintendent, which we are advertising for nationally and have already contracted with an organization to help us with that. So, some things that I'm thinking of are the budget implications that Ms. Patrica mentioned, the communication with our employees to allay some of the fears and some of the concerns that they have regarding, oh, well, if I have to be quarantined, am I using my sick leave? I don't have that much left now. So, there are, there's a lot of angst, and I think that the communication with our employees needs to be focused on. And also, we have had very little stakeholder involvement in this proposed reorganizational plan. So, the importance of the dialogue with the board members, the governance team protocols that we are obligated by law to follow, I think, need us, lead us to a place where we do need to halt for a little bit with the implementation of this change because of the fact that Dr. Savage has a contract that says clearly that he accepted the position as an interim superintendent. So, that means a temporary person to help us with keeping the business of the district moving and in preparing for our changes. So, in order to build the house, you need a foundation. So, I think that slowing down too much is not going to help. Continuing to move in the fashion that we have been moving is going to result in a train wreck. And I think that we just need to stop right now with the reorganization plan and focus on those things that are priorities, because we need to prioritize those things that are right in our faces. I would like to share some excerpts from a letter from a longtime community leader. As a community leader affiliated with multiple organizations that work closely with school district leadership, as a representative serving in various capacities with the school district, and as a 46-year resident of Lee County, I've had the opportunity to see those successes that were talked about by some of our public speakers before. We have been successful, and we have made significant strides as an economic leader and developer in this community. The more unified the board is, the better the results. By your election as board members, you have accepted significant responsibilities in often challenging circumstances. Selecting the right superintendent is clearly one of the most significant roles you have. I've followed the school district leadership transition because of its importance to our community. Okay. It is my understanding that a key reason for an interim was to have someone who could steady the organization and would not be a candidate for the official superintendent It seems that any substantial reorganization should be held in abeyance until the new superintendent is in place. It is unfair to the leaders involved to take on new roles, change reporting assignments, and possibly saddle the new superintendent with such decisions. It is also equally unfair to the individuals impacted and their direct reports involved. Board, I encourage you to make minimal leadership changes while proceeding to do the national search you committed two months ago. The official superintendent selection and appointment is of vital importance to our community and will have a multi-year impact. And the reason I chose to read that was because it was really put into words the thoughts that maybe I wouldn't have articulated that eloquently. So, at this point, I see what we're talking about with the vacant positions that we have both in operations and finance. I'm concerned about that. I have, in writing, reiterated those concerns for a long time, well before Dr. Savage got here. So, I think that we need to look at the priorities, work on those, work on the search for the permanent superintendent, come together, and focus on the business of this district and the success of our children and the impact that has on our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn.
Well, I am going to be supporting this position. I believe Dr. Savage just said that this position can operate completely separate from any other part of the organizational plan. I think this is a missing piece to what we have right now. Again, we're not just looking at the vertical alignment, we're looking at horizontal as well. The other thing is, I think, I believe that all of us received the letter that Ms. Fisher quoted from, and I've used the term before, and I'm going to use it again, about grandpa's Lee County. And I think that, and what that means, for those of you who don't understand, it's leadership in the county, it's iconic leadership in the district that really base their, many of their opinions on the status quo. As a school district, if we haven't learned in the past year and a half that we have to be agile, that we have to move with the times, if we're going to sit here as a board and say, "Dr. Savage, just keep everything on the status quo," boy, are we shortsighted. That is not being proactive, it's being shortsighted. We need to make changes. We need to make changes now. I'm not saying that we have to do the whole reorg, but it's not 1960, 1970 anymore. There are dynamics in this district that didn't exist five years ago, and we have to remain flexible. We need to move forward. We cannot stay stagnant for six to nine months. And so, again, I'm not saying that I'm endorsing or not endorsing the entire reorg, but our superintendent, our superintendent, I'm going to say it again...
Thank you.
...has made a recommendation. I agree with the recommendation. I think if we would poll the community, the community would agree with the fact that there needs to be other ways that community is engaged. And I think it's a good thing to have somebody that holds this as an executive position, because what is this showing? This is showing that we, as a district, recognize that this kind of engagement within the organization, outside the organization, is not, is not for the faint of heart, first of all, and it's also something that demands the expertise of the master's degree, of the 10 years, of all of these skills and knowledges that are listed here, a lot of job functions. I, for one, ran on the idea, and it was endorsed by over 20,000 people, 120,000 across the county, that we need change. And people that are writing these letters from the old guard, if you will, they don't know some of the things, or maybe they do know, but are not recognizing and standing up for some of the problems that the last, that were initiated in the last administration. And before we get all nostalgic about the last administration, and I'm talking to a few people in the audience who were speakers, maybe you're not aware of some of the inequities that many of our staff members have endured. Maybe you're seeing things on one level, but you're not really privy to some of the things that we, as board members, know from having talked to the people in the trenches. So, I will be supporting this.
Ms. Gittens.
I'd just like to say that, listening to my colleagues talk, I've heard kind of a trend from some that's basically a lack of trust. And I've heard before, when we make a decision as a board, once the vote is done, the vote is done, and we are, should comply with the decision that the majority of the board makes. I've heard a couple of you say things like, you know, if he's allowed to do this, what else is coming, and what else is going to be changed? If we don't show trust in the selection of the person that we have, that's not putting forth a good effort to the public that we can do it with someone else new comes in. Because what if the next, the permanent superintendent passes by a 5-2 vote? Are two people going to be for the next year or so that they're on the board continually say they don't trust because it wasn't their selection? We've got to get out of the personal and get into what's right. The superintendent now, and I, I don't know how he's doing it. I mean, we're, he's drinking from the fire hose, and then the hose is coming from this side and that side, and, you know, it's, it's a huge job. And the job has changed in the last couple of years. COVID has turned us all upside down, and we have to look at things differently. So, I'm just asking my colleagues, we're in this point today, we sit here with a superintendent in the seat. Trust that he can do the job. Trust that he has the ability. Coming out of corporate situation, I know when we changed corporate leaders in Bank of America, they were allowed to bring in people around them in their, their close echelon to work with them. And many of you that are business leaders know that you do the same thing. When you have a changer, you move to a new job, then you're going to tap someone that you know has somewhat of the same work ethic and somewhat of the same thought pattern. Just allow him an opportunity to keep us on an even keel and to do the job. He's going to make mistakes just like we do all the time, but at least a majority selected him, let's support him.
Ms. Givinelli, then Ms. Fisher.
So, actually, some of the things Ms. Gittens just said was something, some of the things I was going to say regarding, you know, we are looking for a permanent superintendent, and when they watch this meeting, are they going to want to come here and work for us when we can't allow the superintendent to have the authority that he's been given by statute? So, I think that that's the first thing, is we need to allow for him to do his job. Do I agree with everything that he's doing? Absolutely, I really don't. But you know what? I'm not in his job. So, I'm here to bring it forward when I don't, when I see things that aren't happening that should be happening correctly, and letting him know about that. And that's what I try to do. I personally feel that I have to approve this today because I think that we need to give him that, I want to see, a new superintendent see that we can give him the authority. He, we're going to give him the power to screw up, and if he does, that's when we can say something. And until then, I don't think we should. I personally have felt the, the prior administration's personal vendetta with an ethics complaint that was done against me, and this board really allowed it, and so did the superintendent. So, I am confident that this new superintendent will not allow that to happen from his staff. So, I am going to give him the power, and because, and the reason for that is mainly because I want the staff to realize, employees to realize, that he's not going to allow what happens, what happened in the past to happen to them. He is going to make sure that the follow, the processes are followed, statutes are followed, and laws aren't broken against their... followed, and laws aren't broken against their employment. So I am going to be supportive of this. If it doesn't work, we're all going to tell him about it, and, and then he's going to have to make changes. And we, we're not going to wait for it to be bad before that happens, and we're going to do it early on, when people come to us and say, "This is not working," or "Here's why this is what's happening." So I am going to support it today, because I feel like that the change is needed, especially, personally, I have felt the wrath of the prior administration. So I'm confident that that won't happen to others. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. So I just want to clarify, change is needed, absolutely, change is needed. And some of the longtime leaders in this community have been responsible for change and moving forward, and for growing this community as it grew in population exponentially. I trust that Dr. At, that Dr. Savage has the ability to lead this district. I think that he should have the chief of staff that he's most comfortable with. I think that a chief strategic engagement officer can be a, a good leadership to our already substantial communications department. And it is important, and we've said this many times at, at this table, for us to be able to tell our story, so that people understand what is happening here. It is not about each one of us individually or privately. And, and, and we all have stories, but, you know, that, that's not material, that's not what this is about. So as I was saying, let's stop for a little bit, I, I don't really mean stop, I mean, let's not proceed with the reorganizational plan now until we lay a better groundwork and get the involvement of our stakeholders and the understanding of our employees all the way down the pike, because there are a lot of people who have no clue what's going on, and they should have a clue, they're part of this. It takes time, because we're a big district. This is not like, you know, a $2 billion budget is not a drop in the bucket. We have a responsibility, as elected officials, to hear all of our constituents and to care about all of our employees, and to make sure that some of those inequities and those things that happened in the past don't happen anymore. And that was part of my conversation with Dr. Savage when we did our interview. And he had all the right answers. And I think that, I just said to him today, sometimes it's just that when people are really bright and they have a plan, which we knew it was being worked on as a board, but we had no idea what it was, and I said to him, "Your brain is like 30 miles ahead of us. We need to make sure we have everyone on board and everyone understanding what the plan is before we start to implement it." And, and I just mean that the work we need to do now is to get, get ready for that. But change is needed, and, and, and I do support change.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And, and I really appreciate what you said, a better understanding, because I, I do think that that is definitely important, that the district in itself, everybody within the district, whether it's here or in the schools, they have to understand what is taking place. And I think the unknown is always scary for everybody, but I do believe that he, the superintendent should have the, to the staff, that he feels comfortable with working, not taking anything away from the other person who has been there, who is brilliant. But I know that that would be the new role with the strategic engagement. I, I think that is definitely something that this district, really, we do need that. We need to make sure that we are engaged, and what a better, perfect person to do that but that person. So I, I, I feel that we, that, to me, is not really making a, it's a change, but it's not a change in the whole dynamics of the operation, which I, I think that we definitely need to halt that, because we are looking for that superintendent, and I want that person to come in and be able to, to take care and do what they need to do when they do arrive. And for us to put staff through it more than one time is just too much for anybody. So I, I think that it's a good decision that we, you know, that you've made to kind of halt that at this time, so that way we can start heal, the healing process and start moving the district where we need to go and get these kids what they need. And that's all I have to say right now. Ms. Gittens, I know you have, and we're going to.
It's very.
One more round, and then call for the.
Okay, no, it's very quick. I, I'm sitting here listening to this and know that staff is listening to it and the community is listening to it, and I have one word for all of us up here. If we don't empower the person that we have put in the leadership position and respect them, then staff will feel that they don't have to either. And he has to do his job, he has to have the respect and the cooperation of staff. We need to empower him to let them know, it's, he's in this position, and we support not everything that he does, but overall that we support him as the leader of the Lee County School District at this time. Thank you.
And then I'm going to.
Agreed.
Go to Ms. Vaughn, and then, Ms. Patricia, did you have your hand up? Ms. Vaughn, please.
I just want to say that I agree with everything that Mrs. Gittens has, has just said. It's been an unfortunate turn of events here, that although by five to two margin, we voted this superintendent in, there have been, and, and you know who you are, there have been concerted efforts to undermine his authority. And I find that from some board members who, when Dr. Atkins was here, and I would even ask a question, that they would be appalled, that I would even ask a question, because that question was questioning the authority of the superintendent. I'm sorry that we have hypocrisy here. I'm, you know, I know we've been dysfunctional, okay? We've been dysfunctional. And it's not just me, as some of the older board members have put forth, that, oh, ever since a couple people have come on the board, it's really, no, because it just depends which side of the pendulum we have. I'm just going to remind everybody that this vote is for this one thing. If you want to get into personnel, it affects two people, and if this isn't part of it, there might be one person that finds herself or himself in a, in a job that maybe just doesn't fit. We need to not rely on, "Oh, we've known this person for 44 or 46 years, and they're good people, and we need to..." No, that's not what this is about. It's to put the best talent in the positions, it's to move along without looking at anything but, does the person have the temperament? Does the person have the experience? Is this person a good fit? And again, this position can exist within the current organizational chart. Again, I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Morgan, did you have anything else to say? Is there anything else that anyone would like to comment on?
Okay. And, and I think that, I'm just going to say this to ladies, we, we have to, we have to get out of our own ways as well, and we have to make sure that we are, you know, being kind, being respectful, and, and, you know, doing the job that we are asked to do. I know some days it feels like it's more difficult than others, but we really, all of us have something that we can bring to the table, and we can offer each other, and I just think that we need to, you know, stop regressing, let's, let's, let's try to get the job done that we're here to do, and make sure that we're doing the right thing, you know? We're going to make mistakes, we're, we're humans, but we have to, at the end of the day, try to, try to be the best that we can be. And with that little, whatever that was, I don't know, it just felt like I had to say it, I would like to then call for the vote, and Dr. Savage, if you can just, and I'm sorry to ask you to repeat your motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is the approval to revise and adopt job descriptions as part of the fiscal year '22, 2021, 2022 school year budget, Part II.
Okay. You've just heard the recommendation from Dr. Savage. Can we please have a vote? And Ms. Thomas, will that be a hand vote? Thank you. All in favor of this take place, please raise your hand, Part II. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, so four to three, motion carries.
May I request a five-minute break, please?
Yes, is that okay with everyone? A five-minute break?
What was the final vote?
Oh, it, it passed, it was four to three.
Right. I didn't hear what Ms. Patricia asked.
Four to three.
Okay.
Yes. And so we will take a five-minute break, and.
Madam Chair, what else do, I mean, how much longer do we have? Because I, I have something I need to do, ladies.
Okay, can I, can I also say something? I know that, and I, we were having discussions yesterday or the other day, trying to, to, I know we all have lives, we all have time constraints, that we have things to do, but we have got to make sure that, I mean, I have them as well, but when we have meetings, we definitely need to try to, a lot for, because we all know each other, we know how long it's going to take for us to have a conversation, it may be longer some days, depending upon what we're speaking about, but I, I think a lot of times we are, you know, even though we make an extra hour for a meeting, we will have people wanting to, and I, I get it, you have to leave, because you're, you have your time constraint, but we are trying our hardest to make sure that we do everything in a timely manner, and this is our job, so we have to make sure that we are, we are here and present when we're here.
May I please comment on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I was not trying to shortchange the time that we were here. Looking at the agenda, and my understanding, I think we only have one other item in Board Comments. So my suggestion is that we please just continue, so we can finish.
Well, we have one more thing coming up, and then we will have Board Comments, we'll have Board Comments as well, so there's two things.
Can we take a five-minute break or not, please?
Take the five-minute break, let the, the people leave, and then we'll be back.
Quite a while as well, and so every year annually, you typically see a lot of this, specifically during the summertime where you have a lot of moves being made. And so rather than advertising and then having a parallel effort that then has to advertise for an advertisement, which would then prolong that period, transfers typically are the first piece so that what you're actually advertising is a genuine advertisement that people are applying for after many of these transfers have already taken place.
Okay, one more, one more. Actually, I have two more. So through the chair, from what document were you just reading? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Because I'm looking at the transfer policy in that language that's not in there.
This isn't the board policy. This is the board policy, there are two separate ones which were both cited, but this particular one is from Human Resources. It's a process document that was referenced earlier. It was originated in 2003 and revised in May of 2020.
That's fine. I just need to know it was a process document. Final question is, 5.30 does require the superintendent to consider whether the transfer would be consistent with the district's goals of maintaining racially and ethnically diverse staff. So do we have, do we have any policy issues there? I think that's a question for the board attorney. And if we do, fine, we'll suspend the rules and all of that, but I feel like with all of the open positions we have at the district, we really need to clean this up ASAP.
If I may comment, then please, Board Attorney Bruno, just to answer that question from my perspective, these are two existing executive staff already. They're both already serving executive positions. So in terms of the movement from a diversity standpoint, you're really talking about a zero, a zero change. It's the same number of placements. It's not new. It's, it's just the same number of individuals that are currently impacted by this. So from a diversity equation, how that would be impacting us, I would say that, in my opinion, it's a net change of zero.
So to answer specifically the question, 5.30 is the transfer policy, and that language isn't necessarily, it's not in there, and it does not require the advertisement. The 5.05.
I know, but, but there is diversity requirement, consideration of diversity by the superintendent in 5.30. That's, that's a separate question.
So we're in compliance with that?
Right.
Well, so, so I think the superintendent answered that question. It's not in my purview as to whether or not he did whatever needed to be done to, to verify whether or not we were in compliance in terms of racial and equity and all that stuff. My understanding is that we are. This is a, just a lateral transfer. There's a position that is open, and one person will be in that position, and the other person is being transferred to another position. So I don't see any violations with that. I think we are fine with that policy. I, I don't see any concerns. And I think it's, this is also well within the statutory guidelines. We have both the statute 112, 1012.27, which is pretty clear with regards to the personnel recommendations of the superintendent, as well as Florida statute 1012.22, which talks about the board's responsibilities as it relates to the recommendations, personnel recommendations of the superintendent. In addition, both statutes also indicate that personnel recommendations altogether lie within the purview of the superintendent. So I think this would be in compliance. I do agree that we need to do a little cleanup in 505 and 5.30, but I think we'll be fine.
Thank you. And Ms. Gittens, I know you had something, and then Ms. Javonelli, I'll come right back to you.
The information, where I got this was the Leadership Talent Acquisition and Development Manual. And I don't think I would have been as, you know, agreeing to it, but it was revised in May of last year. So I think that's pretty recent. And by Human Resources, they did the revision. And I'll read the one sentence I read before. The position of Executive Director or higher may be exempt from the screening and selection procedures outlined in this document. And from May of 2020, what can I say?
Thank you. And Ms. Javonelli?
And I just want to remind us that we need to be fair and equitable for all because I can think of several positions that was, I don't even believe were advertised. One was the head of athletics here at the district. We didn't have that position. It was never advertised. Several transportation issue, positions were just, some, we had Mr. Law that was moved out of operations over to transportation, and they created a position for him there. That wasn't advertised. It was a brand-new position. The ESE department had several positions that were all, let's see, it was, it's been reorged so many times, and, and it's just been a little shell game. So I think we need to be real careful about that, and if we're being equitable, we need to be air and fair and equitable for all. Thanks.
So that goes in line with what I was saying, that in my preliminary research, in terms of historically what has happened in the district, these policies have been used in that fashion where there has not been the advertisement. And that, my understanding in terms of the policy, especially the transfer policy, that was not the intent to have the advertisement, because sometimes you need to be very quick in terms of those transfers.
Yep. Is there any other discussion? No. If we then would please.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote and, is it on here? Okay. Record your vote, please.
It's not, it's not coming up. On the wrong page. Yeah, it's not coming up.
Ms. Thomas, Ms. Patrica's having an issue with hers. Not coming up. Is anybody else having an issue with hers coming up?
Let me try one more thing. Got it.
Madam Chair, motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, if I could just make sure that it's noted in the minutes that it was a supermajority vote pursuant to board policy 1.10.
Thank you. And Ms. Thomas, did you get that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay, moving to other business.
Madam Chair, if I may, just have an opportunity to recognize, this is a pretty special moment for me because these are two individuals I have tremendous respect for and their ability to contribute, as they already have in the organization, in very powerful ways. This gives them a new opportunity to contribute in new ways as well. So it would be my privilege to recognize these individuals at this time if I could. I'd like to first start off by recognizing Ms. Lauren Stillwell as our new Chief of Strategic Engagement Officer. Ms. Stillwell. I'd also like to recognize as a transfer and change of assignment, Dr. Denise Carlin from Executive Director of School Development to Chief of Staff.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Congratulations, ladies. Okay, so next on our, the agenda is other business, and Ms. Javonelli, do you have any other business or, this is board comments.
Okay, well, real quick, and I will be quick, just to talk about the mask requirement, I just want to talk about that because that kind of evolved over the weekend, and as a board, we didn't come together, and I think that's bad on our part. I think we should have had a discussion last week, emergency meeting, and, and had a discussion to bring all our stakeholders to, at the table with us. And with experts telling us why the decision was made that way, I think it's vital for the trust of the board and the, and the trust in the community. I think that's, it's just a vital, it's, the conversation should have taken place here first and not a Sunday night letter or email to families. So I just, I, I'm going to caution and remind the board that it's vital that we come together and bring our stakeholders with us. And I'm going to probably, every time that we, we don't do that, I'm going to say something because it's so important for the community to know that we're going to try to do what's best for students, and we have to have a conversation showing and displaying that. And then just doing things at the last minute doesn't, is not good for our community, nor is it good for the board itself. So I just want to remind everybody that we have to, we can't, we can't just have one-sided conversations and not allow for our stakeholders to participate. It's just, we're, we're going to be in the same boat, and we're never going to get past being better. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Savage, do you want to, I know this is board comments, but do you want to comment on the 11th hour, why that took place?
Absolutely. It's my pleasure to do it.
And I understand, I mean.
And I just want to kind of credit, really, all of, all of the governance team here. I understand that as elected officials, you probably received an unbelievable amount of communication from concerned community. This is, you know, a year ago when we literally kind of were opening up the school year to the pandemic, and we weren't even starting it. It was the end of August. We pushed it back. The numbers that we were seeing at that time were terrifying to people, and folks were scared, and there was a lot we didn't know. This year, a year later, the numbers are so much worse. And unfortunately, they had continued to get worse, in our state in particular, compared to the rest of the country. And so across the districts throughout the state of Florida, they were having to react to these conditions that none of us wanted to see. You know, our governor, a year ago, he, he took a stance that was not very popular in the rest of the country. And he said, we are opening up Florida, and we came back at the end of August, and we came back to school. And I will be the first to admit that when I was in my role as Chief of Operations, I was terrified that we were gambling. I was terrified that that decision was going to come back to haunt us. And what I have to instead admit was that the governor was absolutely right, and that it worked out in our favor in the state of Florida because students came back, and we had extremely low levels of secondary transmission. And we were all probably nervous, knowing how consequential our decisions were as a chief team. We'd met all summer. But the governor was right at that time and took that stand. And we opened schools, and our schools were safe, and the students who were in our schools were learning. It was not convenient. People wearing masks, there was distancing, there was sanitation. It was an evolving landscape, but we, we moved forward. I think when we exited this, that year, and went into the summer, we had very, we had very positive trends of what we were seeing from a data standpoint. So we were very hopeful. While we had all of our contingency plans ready, we were very hopeful that we were going to regain a more normal reopening of schools this year. Certainly back in May and June, that's what it appeared it was going to be from a lot of the modeling. Unfortunately, there was a late peak, very similar to what occurred last year. There was a late peak. It occurred after the Fourth of July, and it was about two weeks subsequent to, subsequent to that, that, that really, you know, kind of alarmed us a year ago. I just highlight to you that the numbers this year are so much worse than they were. Just to kind of echo our partners at Galisono, who held a press conference to, to kind of share what they're seeing in the intensive care units, what they're seeing in the emergency rooms, what their pediatricians are seeing, just gives a very, just a different perspective. And those are the medical experts we have been speaking to, many of the medical experts, the Department of Health. We have been communicating with the folks that we can rely on to try to keep an awareness of what's going on. And the pandemic team continued to meet all summer, continued to put in additional countermeasures, and, and yet, as we were hoping to reopen school with some of these relaxed measures in place, the numbers were getting worse. And as a board, you know, we certainly understand that, that you, you know, are kind of caught in the middle in some cases. You have some folks who would say, you're not doing enough, you need to mandate masks in spite of the fact the governor has put a specific executive order that does not afford school districts that opportunity, and does, you know, absolutely have some conditions of if you were to violate that, what could happen. And on the other end, you have, you know, folks who, who really were very much, you know, wanting parent rights to be advocated. So this is a very difficult debate. And I don't know that there are right answers, because we continue to learn all the time. I would say, you know, we have to balance those things. So in my current role, I was trying to balance all of those competing elements, all the things that, that were coming at us. At the end of the day, right before we opened school, on Friday, we were waiting for kind of that last bit of guidance that we were intending to receive from the governor, from the Department of Health, and they issued that guidance. And then we had to react to that guidance and say, okay, here's the guidance we're getting from our policy levels at the state level, who are dealing with very similar challenges that, that I'm reflecting just for our district. They're looking at it statewide. And they provided new policies that we had to unpack. School districts then across the state had to then react to that as well, Friday afternoon into the evening, as we did, because that's what all of us did. We've continued to monitor, we've continued to engage with the health experts, we've continued to do that all summer. The work never stopped. The pandemic, since its inception, the work has continued unabated. Our optimism was there, but the work never stopped. And so when we received this, this exponential level increase, it was happening over the same time period with new policy developments at the state level on that Friday, we then reacted to that and worked into the evening hours on Friday. Then on Saturday, some of our major metropolitan districts tasked with similar safety issues that we have to do, such as Orange County, such as Hillsborough, two major districts, they both basically tried to walk that line of how can we take one additional action to save students' lives, but also stay on the right side of the law in following our governor, who issued a very clear executive order. How do we follow that law, but try the best we can to keep folks safe at the same time? It was, it was really in a response to all of what we were monitoring, as well as, you know, there were attorney conversations happening at the same time with board attorneys across our state. This appeared to be the best recommendation to make. It was certainly not done without great knowledge, that it would be controversial, but it was done if we could save even one more life by taking a slightly more assertive posture from just strongly recommended, that that was the intent behind it. Fully acknowledging that that would cause, you know, unpopularity among some, for me, for all of you, but, but that is why I took the action and exercised the, the board policy to, to do this piece, because there, there really wasn't time left at that point to react to all that, that change in policy on Sunday. And so we convened the, the pandemic team, we also met with our union to react to all this changing information, and, and took a more assertive stance in lieu of the data.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Javonelli, did you have?
Thing to add to that, and I understand it was, the timing wasn't the best, but I just think we have to be proactive instead of reactive, and we should have had these conversations prior to. So, and that being said, no one's really talking about the fact that when you're sick, stay home. That is really probably the vital thing. I've talked to many doctors, and if anyone is sick, including our staff, they need to know that they will be supported, and they need to stay home when they're sick. And regardless of, you know, a positive or negative test, you know, that's irrelevant. And just when you're sick, please stay home, I think. And that, that's just, that's the message. I've talked to many doctors, and that will be the key. Because when you're sick, regardless of what it is, it, just stay home. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I was just hoping that we could finish today's meeting by providing the superintendent with the direction that he has asked us so frequently to provide to him in the past week or so, by reaching a consensus that, you know, we ran out of time to reach at our last briefing regarding whether he should stop, slow down, or speed ahead on this reorg. So I, I don't know that it requires any more discussion because we've kind of beat it up already. So I'm asking the board chair if she could please pull the board for consensus on whether we should stop where we are after today's changes. And if there's no consensus there, the second question could be, should we proceed more slowly? If there's no consensus there, then the third question could be, should we move more quickly? Those are the three questions you presented, correct?
Right. And I think that as of today, Dr. Savage, it is for you, from my understanding, it's a stop at this time. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, you're asking me to answer what I would recommend or what my understanding is of today, of what I heard, just to make sure I understand, just so I answer correctly.
The understanding of today.
So as I sat and listened to today, even though there wasn't a formal consensus heard, you know, I certainly heard different perspectives. I feel as if I heard at least two, at least two basically say there, there should never have been any consideration of, of really any movements. Just trying to characterize what I heard. I would say there were three that maybe I heard there is some desire to consider change moving ahead. And I would say that I heard two that would, would indicate really, it's pretty much slow down to stop. So, so slow to the point of, let's do, let's, let's not have this conversation for a while because it's just not the right time. And so I think, to me, reacting to that kind of mix, I would say that I'm essentially hearing four saying, stop for now. Is that a fair reporting back to, I heard?
So, go ahead, Ms. Patrica. Can we just reach the consensus so that we can provide clear direction instead of each person's interpretation of what was set at the table and whose where?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, well, to get, take a consensus, then I'm not quite sure what, I, I don't know that I can participate in that. I think we should, if you place the question on the table, we should be able to, to discuss it a little bit.
Mr. DePree Bruno, the question that Ms. Patrica just asked for clarity, is there an issue with her asking that question of the board so that we can give Dr. Savage what he needs to proceed?
No. So if the board wants to take some type of consensus or even a form of vote to give the superintendent direction as to how to proceed with reorganizations within the board's purview to do so.
So just to be super clear, my first question would be, is there consensus by the board at this point, given the changes that were adopted today, that we stop pursuit of further reorganization of the district? That would be my question to seek.
Ms., DePree Bruno, did you have something to?
I think, I don't know if Ms. Gittens wanted to say something. Get her hand up.
Ms. Vaughn, go ahead first.
This issue is, is not a simple yes, no, because I think all of us have different concepts of what would be moving ahead, fast, slow. And the reason that we didn't reach a consensus when we were in the midst of doing this in a briefing is because we had that particular day, three meetings totally back-to-back-to-back, and we were overscheduled, or more likely, what Madam Chair said earlier, we do discuss. And I, I think this needs to be noted, and I think it needs to be something where we can look at pieces of, of this reorg plan and maybe get more guidance from Dr. Savage. In other words, have him say to us, okay, here's piece number two. We've, we've added this one position, which can work either in the reorg or in the current plan. Here's what I would like to propose next. And then we talk about it. But I, I don't feel comfortable at all voting, or, well, I know we're not voting, but any consensus, it's, there's, there's no point to it at, at this point. And plus, if Ms. Patrica wanted to have this question answered, I think all of us on the board should have had time to do our homework on it and be able to study. I'm not prepared to do that because this was not put forth to us as a possibility. So I would like time to do my homework on it.
Ms. Gittens.
My question, I, I guess I'm just confused, but when we voted on motion, we divided the motion. We had motion one, motion two. And I feel at that time, if any of my colleagues did not want to proceed with anything, they would have voted it down. I don't recall what the, the final vote was, but it did pass to go ahead with the superintendent's motion for those positions. And I'm sure that as he makes any moves with them, he will be bringing it back to us for the final, you know, this is what I would like to do now. I, I don't see a need for another consensus or a vote. We had the division of that motion, we took the vote on it, both of them passed, and I'm for just moving on.
Okay, if, if I, if the, what we voted on was job descriptions, not moving forward or not moving forward, or moving slow or moving fast. It was just merely regarding the job descriptions.
But may I say though?
And I think that, that Dr. Savage would probably appreciate some kind of guidance of where he needs to move versus him going through a lot of this again, and then bringing it back, and then here we go again in another month. So we did stress the fact that we know that we have to concentrate on those subjects, such as making sure that the kids have what they need, making sure school gets started, making sure that staff and our team, that they have all the tools and everything that they are going to need. There is so much more that we need to be concentrating on versus this reorg at this time. And, and I think that he had addressed that as well. And so I, I think we just, we just keep on re-speaking the same stuff over and over again. Ms. Gittens?
And just, may I finish?
Go ahead, please. And then Ms. Javonelli, I'm going to come back to you.
To me, the whole thing of this continuous conversation is about distrust of some people feeling like that somehow or another, the superintendent's going to slip one through on us and have somebody appointed to a position from one of those positions. He has to bring it back to us. It is not, we approved, okay, here are these positions, not here are these positions, and Joe and Jim and Sue are going to fill them. These are the positions. When he has someone or decides to fill one of those, he has to come back to us. And we can say yea or nay. I don't think we, to me, this is about trust, that you don't trust that he's going to come back. He can't do it on some, policy-wise, he cannot.
Thank you. And I'm going to have Ms. Javonelli, because I know you had one comment to make, and then we're going to move forward.
I don't think we need to, I mean, why are we going to tell the superintendent to stop doing something when we don't even know what that something is? He needs to continue doing his job. And if he thinks that there needs to be some changes made, he can bring it back to us as recommendations. And you know what? Then we can have that conversation then. But at this point in time, he needs to be allowed to do his job, and that's, and, and he has full authority to do so. And he'll work with his staff, his new chief of staff, and they'll figure it out. Thank you.
Ms. DePree Bruno?
Madam Chair, perhaps polling the board quickly, just to be able to see where everybody is. I think that the super, based on the conversations that we've had, the superintendent probably needs to have some very clear guidance from the board as to whether or not he needs to continue to work on this or not work on this, because I think there's confusing messages that are coming in. One board member cannot direct the superintendent, it needs to be the board. So.
If we're going to make a motion, then we need to have the community, the public comment.
This is not a motion. I'm asking for a consensus of the board to provide, to provide direction to the superintendent, which I believe he has asked for repeatedly.
So Ms. DePree Bruno, as far as the.
Ms. Bruno, we shouldn't have people from the audience speaking out in the middle of our business meeting.
I would appreciate it, guys, if you could please just hold the comments, because we don't have public comments at this time.
Ms. DePree Bruno?
Ladies, please.
Ms. DePree Bruno, can you?
So there's nothing that is actionable that's going to be voted on at this time. You're not taking any formal action on anything. What you're trying to do is figure out amongst yourself as a board, which direction do you want the superintendent to go? When he has, if you give him the direction to move forward, then when he has bits and pieces of whatever this proposal is, he will come back to the board, and then at that point, you will discuss it, and at one point, at another point, you will have your formal action on whatever those pieces are. But there's been a lot of confusion, a lot of different directions. So it would be helpful to be able to get some guidance from the board as a whole in terms of what direction you want the superintendent to go.
Okay, and Dr. Savage?
Let me just kind of clarify, like, let me give it an example, I think that might help. So, you know, there may be aspects of the organizational structure that people really liked, and, and that's one thing I'll say, just harkening back to the July briefing, where there were concepts that were there. So let's, let's give you an example, like the enterprise risk concept, trying to make sure that we're managing risk and really thinking about that from a different lens. That doesn't have to be a overnight type of thing. That could be a single conversation that could be mapped out with, you know, over months, if we wanted it to be. We're bringing an issue, here's data that kind of speaks to that particular issue, here's recommendations of positions. That would be, in my mind, a example of slow, and, and in this particular case, we really, from what I'm hearing, we have a lot of work to do right now. There's a lot of work. Opening up the schools, making sure that they are safe, making sure we have our thoughtful planning for S, or there's so many things to do. And I, and I really, from a board standpoint, my priority really is that I want to make sure that I am executing the board's vision for what has to happen from a policy level down. So, so the reason why I've asked for that feedback is strictly to know that it's not individual board members, certainly have individual opinions, but it's your. individual board members certainly have individual opinions, but it's your opinion as a board, it's your consensus as a board that says, you know what, we may have disagreements, but we come together to say this, that is what I work for, that is what I must execute. So, so I think that's kind of the piece of it. So I just wanted to highlight that as an example of, it's very slow, could be, we're really not focused on it right now. We're more focused on the opening of the school, getting these other pieces, getting the feedback, trying to institute with most of the pieces that we have. But we potentially have a thoughtful discussion about very specific areas that may have been highlighted in that reorganization concept, so that there could be future discussion about some of that critical effort that could be made or not. Because I don't think there was any appetite to go full speed ahead. So I would say if it were between that slower piece that I just gave an example of, or no action at all, that would probably be helpful to simplify the direction that I, just to save time for me, for staff, or others.
So then, may I ask the board if at this time that we, I'm going to do one first, ask the superintendent to put a halt on it for now, so that we can concentrate on what we have to concentrate at this particular time with the notion of coming up back in the future, if we all desire for that to take place? Does that work for?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. You're saying to him then, until we come back together, he can't do his job?
No, I'm not saying that at all, because his job is to make sure that we are open in operating and that we have what we need to move forward. We're not telling him he cannot do his job. And we're not telling him that he doesn't have the opportunity for the other?
What I'm saying, can I, can I clarify?
That he cannot finish, thinking about other opportunities that, of course, at any time, he's going to have to come back to us anyway and bring that.
And that's, that's my, that's my point, that we have given him the positions. If in the empowerment of doing his job, he sees that, you know, we need to take this one and make it live, because it will help this situation right here, he still will bring that back to us.
That's correct.
And this is why we voted, to approve the positions. I think approving the positions says, do what you have to do with the positions, but anyway, I.
And that's not stopping, prohibiting him from doing what you just, what you just stated. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, and I'm just going to object to the language you used, because it could be confusing. To unconfuse it, if that's even a word, unconfuse, no. Anyway.
Please unconfuse it.
What I would say is, let's have two options, because when you say halt, to me, that's stop. We don't want to hear it ever again. Or, we want, we want to be, we are interested in this, and as the superintendent sees fit, to bring it back slowly. Because I agree with what Dr. Savage said, there didn't seem to be any appetite to move full speed ahead, let's get this done by next week. So I would say to make it less confusing, it's either stop, we don't want to hear this again, or we have priorities to focus on right now, but as you see fit, please bring us portions of it for consideration.
That's, that's very elegant. I like that. That works for me, that works for me, Ms. Vaughn.
Or don't stop.
Ms. Patrica, does that work for you?
I don't have any idea what we're talking about anymore, I'm sorry. I brought the question forward, should we tell the superintendent to stop? Should we tell him to go, I mean, he's the one who asked the question. I don't understand why we're resisting providing him with an answer.
I think that the.
After today's changes, do we want the superintendent to continue to pursue changes to the structural, the structure of the organization? That's it.
Mr. DePree Bruno, I know you have something to say.
Madam Chair, perhaps take a consensus on those two things. One, first consensus on, do you want the superintendent just to stop? And then the second consensus would be, we know that you have priorities, bring back things slowly by whatever, department or position, what have you. Excuse me, ma'am, there's nothing before the board, and you're going to be out of order, Ms. Jenner, because you keep speaking. They need to be able to do their job.
Thank you. So, number one, do we want this to stop right now? So can I have a show of hands if they want Dr. Savage to stop moving forward with any?
Reorganization.
Any reorganization at this time?
Any proposal for the reorganization.
I can't answer the question. The question I want to talk about is, what do we expect him to be doing? What are the things that he should be working on? That, that's my concern.
Okay, so we're not going to get a consensus on this. I can see that right now, Ms. Patrica, so and Dr. Savage, I apologize. I can see everybody has their difference of opinions.
We didn't ask the other side.
And so, the other side is, the other side would be the slowdown and bring back forward. Is that what you said, that the second one?
The other one would be, understand the priorities of the district at this time, but bring back pieces or portions as you deem fit.
So do we have anybody for consensus on it? Are you, are you in agreement? Okay, I wasn't sure if you were, okay, so that's your answer. There will be?
Five.
One's missing, and one is, no. Thank you. And then Ms. Patrica?
Okay, so I'll just say, you know, I have, I reviewed the interim superintendent's contract coming into today, and, you know, the first whereas clause says that the school board desires to provide the interim superintendent with a written contract in order to enhance the administrative stability and continuity within the schools. I'm not feeling, as a member of the governance team, that stability and continuity have been enhanced over the past six weeks. I would urge the superintendent to please focus on the day-to-day operations of the schools as they exist. Assist the board in finding a balance so that we can attract, attract the best candidates for the permanent superintendent position. I don't know how or when we, as a board, intend to evaluate the interim superintendent, given the fact that, that he's here for a short period of time. I think we need to have a discussion about when that occurs. Because at this point, I'm not feeling as if the charge has been fulfilled to my satisfaction. So I'd like to figure out how we, as a governance team, want to proceed with providing that feedback to the superintendent at this point. I think it's needed sooner rather than later.
Thank you, and I will make sure that that is brought up, for us to do that, scheduled. Is there anything else, Ms. Patrica?
No. Just while we're here, first day of school was yesterday. But before that, I had four additional teenagers at my house on Friday night, and I did my, like, 11:30 walk-through to make sure they weren't, you know, being knuckleheads. And all four of them were talking about their schedules. All four of them were talking about the impending school year. Four teenagers, they're sophomores in high school, on a Friday night, eating junk food and drinking soda. That was what they were talking about at 11:30 on Friday. I, I just thought that was really cool. So I wanted to share that with you guys. At least, you know, four kids in Lee County were excited to go back to school. That's it. Those are my comments.
It's not just four, there were many. Yours, yours were four of them. Let's see. I have, oh, Ms. Fisher, MIA, Ms. Gittens?
Okay. And, and I, I would be remiss not to make this comment. I believe that throughout the six weeks that Dr. Savage has been here, we have more than communicated to him as a governance team how he was doing and our approval and disapproval. So I just want that on the record. School, a couple of things, and I'm not sure when, when I can bring this up, I may bring it up next week again. School choice has been a real challenge, and I know that it was a challenge to a lot of people. I don't know how many calls you guys have gotten, but everybody thinks I have a magic golden wand in my phone, that, you know, you can just put that kid right there and, and, you know, and of course, we refer them on. My suggestion is, several years ago, we had satellite, excuse me, we had satellite school choice offices. And I don't know the full reason that they were taken away, but we are as big of a district as we are and as spread out as we are. I was appalled, and I called back the office one day when I was leaving, to see the numbers of people lined up around the building in 100-degree heat, waiting to get into school choice. I understand with COVID, you couldn't have everybody in the hall, but there should have been something that we could have done. And I understand there were some tents or whatever put up. And I called back and I said, can we get water? Can we do something for these people? And I really am hurt to have heard from a couple of people, well, they shouldn't have waited till the last minute. I'm sorry, but that's not our decision to make. The people did what they could when they decided to do it, and it's their choice when they decide to do that. So our job is to service them and help them to get their children in school. So my suggestion is going to be, we do have a plethora of portables in this district, so I am suggesting that each zone have a portable that is retrofitted to be used at least two to three months out of the year as a satellite for school choice. I also know that with the numbers of parents and children out in the East Zone, and yes, I'm saying it again, transportation is not as easy for them to get here and during the day to stand in line and all of that. So we need to educate them better, and I have, you know, thoughts of how I'm going to help with that, at least in my zone. But I'm saying we should take and have a satellite office in each zone for at least the two to three months before school starts, just to answer questions, to give a rational, reasonable time for people to be there and to get their children enrolled in school. So I will bring that up again later. I have, in the last couple of weeks, done quite a few school visits, but I didn't go yesterday and today. I kind of, I was telling Ms. Patrica, I think day one and day two are like Groundhog Day. Day one, you got the, if you're on block schedule. And day two is the same thing, day one all over again, because you have different kids coming in. But I kind of felt, especially with all the things going on in COVID and all, when, when we show up on campuses, you know, they're going to, oh, there's a board member here. And, and, and I know, like Ms. Patrica, helps with the kids, and some of us do that, but I just wanted to give them space. And that's just my personal opinion on the first day. But I did visit quite a few schools beforehand and spoke to the incoming teachers and the returning teachers. And I will let you know, you're going to hear a lot from me about requesting an extra stipend or an extra something for the teachers and staff that live in other districts and decide to come out to the East Zone. I, every time I talked to a group of teachers, I would ask the show of hands for the people that were traveling to get to us. And at least a third of every group that I spoke to was coming from the Cape or coming from south of the county or somewhere. We're not going to be able to keep them if we don't do something to keep them out there. And I just think there's a grant or a stipend or something that we can do. Give them a gas, gas card once a month. I talked to one lady that said she had been doing, living in the Cape and working in the East Zone for the last two years, and she'd put 150 miles on her car, and she doesn't want to have to buy another car. These are the realities of our staff sacrificing to come and to work in the East Zone. We don't want any area to feel like it's a sacrifice to be there. We can find some money, some dollars to do something. I'm working with some businesses as well in the area. We're trying to come up with some things to do. But we need to step up. We know that the area that needs the most staff is in the East Zone, so we need to do something to get them there and keep them there and make them feel like we really want them. A question, and it can be rhetorical right now, you can get the answer to me, but I had several teachers asking if they have to be quarantined or whatever, do they have to use their own sick time if they have to be off for 10 to 14 days? And I just wanted to ask it in this venue so that it could be clearly answered. I have a concern about, it kind of goes back to school choice again, but we have two new schools in the East Zone, and both of them had a limit as to the number of students that were supposed to be there this year. And both of them are well over that limit at this point. One was supposed to open with between 11 and 1,200 students. Their capacity is 2,000, they now are at 13-something. One was supposed to open with 1,250, because that's what was built out for, and they are well over 13. They were over 13 last week this time. So I know they're over now. And we're, kids are still coming. We've got to do something about that. We can't, and so I'm going to be requesting for each of the schools all over the district, the data that shows the capacity of the school, the enrollment at this time, and the levels academically that are at that school. Because I can tell you, if you really want to hear me carry on, let me find out that our schools in certain areas have received a plethora of Level Ones and Twos, and others have gone to other areas. I, I just, I won't stand for it. I'm just going to keep bringing it up until we fix it. You can't say to someone, your scores are bad, or you're not doing this, and you're not spreading the wealth of the students that you're, you're giving them. So that's, let me see, there's one other, I think that's on there, and I'll bring up the rest next time. Oh, I knew what it was, transportation. If anybody from transportation is here or listening or watches or watches later, I want everybody to do something, if you don't mind helping me. Would you all please stand up a minute on the dais? Just please stand up with me. And I'm going to give a clap for everybody in transportation that has helped. I know that they have been out all times of the day and night, and I appreciate you all helping me and thanking them for all that they're doing, as well as all of our staff throughout the district. Thank you, and be safe.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Well, Ms. Gittens kind of stole my thunder a little bit about, but I too want to give a special shout-out to transportation. I know some of the buses came in really late last night. I had a meeting today with Tauck Spock and got a little, their insight as to why that happened. But we always have those little quirks and bumps in, in the first week of school, and let's face it, this is quite, you know, we thought last year was going to be a challenging year. Well, we're starting out way more challenging than, I think, than it was last, last year. I was just trying to find, and I'm going on memory now, it just brought up about the quarantining and that sort of thing. I believe that there is a differentiation on quarantining, whether the, the staff member or whomever is vaccinated or not. Am I remembering correctly, Dr. Savage?
Can Ms. Stillwell answer that?
There's an in-house expert here.
Oh, okay, yeah.
This is a great opportunity to highlight just the tremendous evolving landscape.
I believe that there's a difference, is there not? Ms. Stillwell?
You are correct. If there is an employee who is vaccinated, he or she would not be quarantined unless they were symptomatic. And at that point, then it would be isolation at that point.
Ms. Vaughn, is that?
Okay.
I always have to look at Beth to make sure.
Yeah, I was frantically looking for that and couldn't find it in time, but...
And that's the same this year for students. It was last year for students who had it, which were very minimal, but this year it's the same for students. If they're vaccinated, they would not be quarantined.
Yes, and I do realize that at this time, it's individual decisions that may not continue to be the case as vaccines are recognized officially by the FDA. But I just wanted to put it out there that employees that, and the students, the parents of the students, and of course, they have to be 12 and up for the students. We don't have any 12-year-old teachers, I don't think, but anyway. That is a consideration, if they're worried about that. And again, I don't, well, I'll get mail anyway. But I recognize the individual choice. I recognize the parental rights in this, but I think it warrants bringing up that there are some things that can be, that can be done.
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah. This, probably the past several weeks, has been the time that multiple organizations have had typically very successful fundraising drives, donations, the backpacks and school supplies. I did not go out to Franklin Park for the welcome, but in lieu of that, it was really hard to find uniforms. Boy, they sold out fast during tax-free, but I went to about three different Targets and brought Franklin Park last week, huge bags of about 20 pieces, uniform pieces, because I know that that is a need there. And I just want to say that although this was the time of the year that we all do the push for donations, school supplies, those crayons break, and there's always a need, and we always have students that, for instance, I know shoes are a big need. I think the district used to and probably still do, or maybe United Way, Laces of Love, and some of those organizations. In the past, I've been involved with fundraising drives for that. So what I would say to everyone is, if you are in the position to make donations, to continue to think about that as the year goes on, and maybe kind of look out for organizations, or again, if you are lucky enough to be in the position to give extra. And, you know, for me, I have only one grandchild right now that's still in the public schools. My granddaughter's moved on to FGCU, and their parents are in the position that they can supply their needs. But we have so many families and children in the foster care system and homeless children that really, really have a need. So I just wanted to put that out there. It's wonderful to go greet the kids, hey, how are you doing? But, you know, your local, for those of you, I mean, for us, our local schools are all of them, but, you know, maybe the school your grandchild goes to, or your niece or nephew, or your neighbor child goes to, just reach out, ask them, what do you need? And let's try to do this all year long, instead of just the push at the end of July, which is something, is something great. And I can't end without commenting on something Mrs. Patrica said about civility. I must be in a, maybe I'm in an alternate universe here, but I haven't seen any indications about lack of civility coming from our superintendent. As a matter of fact, it seems as though, and I'm just putting it out there, because you know me, that there have been some people on all different levels that are unhappy with a choice that the board made, a five-to-two vote. And perhaps they're the ones that lack of civility rests on, just saying. And to everybody out there, first, that are in the schools, my heart is with you, and recognizing, of course, all the extra hours that our district staff has put in in order to make that happen, and, I mean, everyone, the cafeteria workers, the maintenance, all, it's a tremendous task in a normal year to open school. But we're now in our second. I hope it's abnormal. I hope we get back to normal at some time, maybe this year. But I just send on my love and best wishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, I said stability, not civility.
Oh, okay. I misheard.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Okay, so what do I expect? I expect a laser focus on students, on student achievement, and that's all I want to hear about before we talk about making any changes. I want to know exactly where we are, I want to know what the problems are, and I want to know how changes make a difference in our ability to support those kids. Secondly, I want to see an end to open positions in the operations and finance departments. You know, talking about people who are exhausted, in part because the departments aren't, haven't got, aren't staffed. And as been made clear, we're short one senior-level executive in there. You can't run operations and run the district, just not possible. I am concerned about the union relationship. We have gotten off, as I understand it, to a kind of rocky start. I'm not sure where the problem lies. I think it probably lies in different places. But the fact of the matter is, when we're in a difficult time with respect to this pandemic, I think it needs to be absolutely clear that people are actively negotiating day by day as changes are made. We don't do MOUs at the last minute. We do them in anticipation of decisions we will have to make, and we want staff involved in making those decisions. So that's what I, that's, those are my issues going forward. That's my focal point, that's what I'm looking to hear about. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And I have to agree with every single thing that you said. I believe that is vitally important for all of that. And I appreciate everybody else's comments on what their goals are for the year, what they've seen. It's important that we share that information with one another, so that way we know. I did, however, have the opportunity to go to Franklin Park yesterday and to witness the celebration of the children coming into the schools, and not just, not just the children, but the parents as well, believing it was their first day as well. The uniforms and the supplies and everything that was, has been donated to that school, and as you said, Ms. Vaughn, it is an ongoing thing throughout the year, for sure. In the beginning of the year, it looks like there's so much, and, you know, you think it's the end, but it's never the end here. That's something that we always have to make sure that we are doing. But I also want to, I really appreciate what transportation is doing, but I think what we are forgetting, student assignment, those people have been rocking it over there. There was a line out there yesterday, and I just so happened to be here in the district, and I went over there. I don't know really anything about student assignment, but someone else from the board office went out there with me, who actually could speak Spanish, because I can understand, but I do not speak it. So when we were out there, we were able to cut that line in half, just giving them that one piece of paper that they may have needed, after getting directions from Ms. Ralph and her team of how we could assist them to do that. It's like, it's all hands on deck when it comes to, you know, making sure that the schools are opening and what is needed. And it was great to be out there. It was hot as heck, but it was good to be out there and share that information. And a lot of, I think, Ms. Gittens, you made mention about the schools in Lehigh, I think you were speaking about Lehigh. But there was a lot of parents actually down here that were transferred because they were in the north Fort Myers area that were scheduled over there, so they were swapping those kids out because they were in the wrong schools. So quite a few of those, that happened yesterday as well. But I just feel that we need to make sure that we are supporting our team, our staff, and really show that we appreciate everything that they are doing. Teachers, of course, we love our teachers, but our support staff and all of them, we cannot do this alone. We need each and every one of them, and we have to make sure that we are constantly showing them our love and support. And Ms. Morgan, you gonna say something?
I forgot to ask a question.
Go ahead.
My question's of the superintendent. I still haven't found a place on the website that tells parents how their children will be educated in the event that their classroom is quarantined. Or the child is quarantined. I don't know what the plan is, I don't see the information. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
No, that's, we definitely, that's something that needs to be out there. I know that right now, when you first hit the, go onto our website, the, that one thing pops up for us. So Dr. Savage, do you know, do you have a response to that?
Well, I can just give you the first start of that piece, is that anything that would impact the teachers' working conditions or an expectation of the entire class would certainly be something that has to be bargained, unless it were part of an MOU. So I would say that if, you know, just certain things that have been put out there, we just want to make sure that we're speaking accurately about what teachers are expected to do to help deliver that piece in terms of instruction that doesn't require the teachers, things that are resources and things that they can access. I'll certainly get with Dr. Spire, we'll find out a specific area of what things are currently available. I just don't want to get into any potential blanket statements of, wow, teachers will be updating certain portals on a particular time period, until those things have been, you know, properly engaged with our union counterparts to make sure that whatever we're asking of our teachers is fair and is something that all sides can agree to, for our students' benefit.
So, and that conversation definitely needs to be had. Perfect. Ms. Gittens?
Can I, if I can comment on that, like I said, I went to several schools when they were talking to the teachers at the beginning of the year, and the basic comment was that all students would have access to their lessons through Google Classroom. And I know personally, I remember I was teaching a class and I was sick and I had to, I actually taught the class from my bed on Google Classroom, because you can interact with the students, send messages, they can send messages, you grade, all of that type of thing is there and available. And that's what they've been saying, is that Google Classroom would be their method of communicating.
That was what I was alluding to, was that that is the resource. All teachers, by virtue of being school district teachers, have access to the Google Suite, which includes all those pieces, so all of them have that access. But to get into specific asks about what the teachers would be expected to do, I'd want to be very cautious.
Has to go through that.
Because that's something that, anything that would impact the teachers' conditions, we just want to make sure that our, all of, everyone's had ample time to be on board with any statements. So that's why, that's why I specifically refrain from bringing it, but that is, in fact, the, what we are working with as well.
Okay, thank you. And, goodness, I lost my whole train of thought. And I wanted to say thank you, Ms. Gittens, for setting that up at the Edson Mall. That was quite exciting. I felt like a superstar that day. I don't know what my kids thought about it, but I felt good about it. It was great.
We've got some kids.
Dr. Savage? You were, yeah, I don't know what happened with the weight jacket, but you still did a good job.
I have to say, I ran into a couple of kids, and they're asking me, when do we do this again?
No, it was a very positive thing, and having, just being out there as a district, being able to be out there, to hand out information to everybody that was coming in, was really a good thing. And I think the more that we can be out there in the community and being able to share what we do and have the, you know, the people there to ask the questions, I think that's, we really definitely need to do that. And I just wish everybody the best of luck. I don't think we need luck, I just think we're going to be great this year. Whatever comes before us, we're going to handle it, and we just need to continue to move forward. And with that, I think it's Mr. Pre Bruno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last year, and I think it was September, maybe it was October, we had a board retreat with the superintendent. It was done in-house. We went through some statute, we did some scenarios. I wanted to know if the board had any appetite to do something like that with the executive leadership.
What do you all say? I would be all for that, just saying.
My question is with, okay, so with the chiefs and all, and us?
So just a thought, but perhaps one portion with superintendent, the other portion with the chiefs and the board.
Building that relationship.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be interested in the one with the other staff members. I'm not sure with just us alone, but I don't think...
Ms. Vaughn?
That's too vague. Talking about a board retreat, we're not talking about... I have a boat jumping in water.
Ms. Fisher isn't here, the boat.
Yeah, no boats.
Okay.
Yeah, I, maybe.
That's a maybe. Ms. Morgan?
Well, I think it's an interesting idea. I think the question is, you know, what we would use for an agenda that would be, you know, sort of team-building, whatever. And I think maybe what we need to do is sort of communicate with Attorney DePuy Bruno and just let her know if there are things that we feel would be helpful conversation. Because frankly, you know, talking about the strategic plan and academic services is, in fact, it's not a retreat, but that is our job, and that's how we learn about, we did that in workshops, that's how we learn about the people doing the job. So it's not exactly clear to me, you know, how we might frame it, but I'm interested in hearing what other people think.
Thank you, yes. Ms. Juvenelli?
I'd be fine with that. I mean, I understand, we do need an agenda, but, I mean, so is it going to be team-building or is it, you know, real work? I mean, so we have to define that.
Yeah.
That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So I would say I'd prefer to, as long as it's not at the sacrifice of any means for the permanent superintendent search, I wouldn't want that to be a priority over the other work the board already has to do to include policies. We've got a lot of policies we have to work on, and I wonder whether we shouldn't be prioritizing those things first. I'm not an unwilling participant, I'm just wondering whether that should be the priority of this board right now.
So, Ms. DePuy Bruno, I think that you get what you, what you were looking for?
I have somewhat of a consensus to look into some additional things and bring it back to the board.
Ms. Juvenelli?
So not everybody has to attend, right, if they don't want to?
That's correct. It's not a forced attendance.
Right, exactly.
Madam Chair, wasn't there someone that had spoken at the FSBA conference that you guys had mentioned having them?
We actually, I think we had directed the superintendent's office, Ms. Holly, to get that information for us, so...
I thought we were going to talk about that at our next...
Yeah, we're not gonna, yeah, we're not gonna speak about it, but that was already directed, so we do have that. And thank you for that reminder, Ms. Gittens. Keep us on our toes. Dr., I'm sorry, Mr. Pre Bruno, did you have anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is, you know, we've done a lot today, but I would just say, so have our kids. We just finished day two, and day one was really something we've been looking forward to for a long time. And so, you know, I had a chance to go out and visit our schools. I started day one taking my own children, beginning their journey with the Lee County school system, taking them to class, watching them basically dismiss me very dispassionately. They were just fine. They were eating breakfast and said bye-bye and left daddy. Very, very sad. So, saying... School System, taking them to class, watching them basically dismiss me very dispassionately. They were just fine. They were eating breakfast and said bye-bye and left daddy, very, very sad. So saying, I don't know what happened to my little children, but they have turned into bigger kids now and it was, it was a powerful moment as a dad. But then I got the chance to go to Tice and see what is a true neighborhood school, kids walking up their families, the Greek car riders, and spoke to some of our reporters as well, and they had lots of great questions for the community. Then went from there over to Royal Palm, which while I liked all the schools and all of them were a really powerful opportunity, it was my privilege to go to Royal Palm where I understand that, that tour had not been taken there on the first day before. And so they really felt the tremendous privilege of have, of really being, and I spent the most time at Royal Palm as well, went into more classrooms there than any other. And it was just tremendous to see, you know, so many wonderful people. There's, there's, you know, one particular individual, I'm thinking, who was a longtime director here, phenomenal individual, who after retirement came back and continued to serve at that school. And so it's really a team of heroes, of just tremendous people that I wanted to kind of acknowledge there. Then we went to Success Academy and visited, greeted some students coming off the bus ramp. I got to see the Lamp Center as well, some of our mothers, just everybody on their first day. And then had a chance to go over to Fort Myers Technical College and saw some of our adult learners with some incredibly robust programs going on that were so tethered to the workforce that it really gave you just, you walked into a classroom and each classroom really felt like you were walking right into the workplace. It was amazing. And their placement rate is so high, it's just a tremendous, best kept secret in Lee County is that FMTC and what they are doing. And the campus was immaculate. They're, they're going to be going, undergoing some renovation work as well, but they are just doing incredible job there as well. From that point, we drove all the way out to Mariner Middle, out to the West Zone and had a chance to walk with Principal Gould and just was so impressed with the culture that has been established at Mariner Middle. Mariner Middle used to be one of the lower performing schools in the Cape. They struggled. They had turnover, they had a lot of issues. They led, I think, the district in referrals at one time. Not anymore. And so I just had the, just the utmost respect for Principal Gould and the work that she had done building just a tremendous culture there as well. And just a lot of students excited to be there. And then I went down from Mariner all the way down to Estero High School. Had a chance to walk with Principal Mike Amabile and into various classrooms and I will tell you, he is just a tremendous guy and those folks are amazing. And he is a servant leader and we walked into one of his II classrooms, among others. And I will tell you, he knew every single child in that room, every single child. And we spent time unpacking where they had been over the summer and it just kind of reminded us of the powerful work that our teachers are doing, that our leaders are doing and that all of our school staff. Met one of the coaches there as well, who's a tremendous coach, but also the building supervisor. You know, there are just so many roles in our district. I had a chance to greet so many people and just reflect in the powerful opportunity whenever we resume schools, how much work is going on that we don't really talk about and it is just life-changing work that is happening as we speak. And then I finished from Estero to Gateway, that was the last school that I visited that day, to close out their school day and say goodbye. And I found out just how unpopular and uncool I am when you're surrounded by high school age kids. I used to, I used to be so cool with elementary school kids, I still am a rock star to them, but when you walk with high schoolers, they're just dodging you. And so here I am on the bus ramp and some of them did have great conversation with me, but there were others who quickly got on their phones and tried to find a way to not make eye contact with the superintendent. So that was kind of cool, too. And then I got to finish, I came back here to the district, did some more work and then I went back out to the Six Mile Compound where I had a chance to stay until the final bus from the final route arrived. And I greeted a lot of our late routes and I will just echo what's already been said. Transportation, I can't say enough about the challenge they had. The first day is so hard every year. Dismissal takes longer, you know, things, but it's so much harder with thunder and lightning. When you put in heavy thunderstorm pattern in it, it's just a brutal, brutal day. And so the very first driver that came up almost closed the door on my arm when in because he was, he was, you could tell it'd been a long day. But I greeted some others and had just some of the most spirited, wonderful conversations I had the entire day, hearing our drivers who had just worked, think about, maybe they started at 4:30 in the morning and they're working all day long and they came back and they weren't getting back till after eight o'clock at night, you know, after they dropped off their routes and it just was really, really something, just tremendous. I was there with the leadership of that group as well as many of these drivers. We talked about all manner of things and it was wonderful. So that's just to give you a sense of how that first day was from my perspective, when I, by the time I got back, I was drenched with sweat, so my suit is going to have to be dry cleaned because it is not, you know, it was, it was a long day. But really just appreciated being out in our schools. It was a great place to be and I've heard a lot of good things about day two. I just want to echo also just one of the challenges, among others. Certainly we had some instructional shortages, but schools were well underway trying to deal with those issues. Bus transportation, same, you know, shortages there as well. And so they worked through a lot of those issues to come up with workable solutions, whether it's split routes and whatnot. But then I also want to kind of highlight the role the pandemic has played this year. You know, when you have such high levels of community spread, that level, just the challenges that the quarantines have and exposures, those things are just dramatic challenges for staffing when you have folks who are there and employed, but then a group that maybe was together is now not there. And so that, you don't attribute that to the school secondary transmission. It's just, it's just an unfortunate byproduct of being in our community right now with such high levels of community spread. So I want to echo a comment that was made earlier to our parents, and it's true, we have not said this enough. If your child is sick, please keep them home, please. That is the number one thing you can do. If you can, if your child is sick, it has those symptoms, please, please keep them home. That is so important right now because we certainly want our students back for in-person learning. We really value that, but please, please stay home. That needs to be said. And that was, I think, all I had for today. Just, just thank you to all of our hardworking staff and student assignment as well. Thank you to everyone for making the, the first day of school a success. A thank you to all of our staff.
Thank you. Ms. DePuy Bruno, did you have something else to say?
Just one more thing. I would like to recommend to the board that either an ad be put out or some type of, that the board starts moving forward to secure its internal auditor. I am concerned that at this point, we still don't have the internal auditor, but at least maybe start this process because I don't want this to come back on the board that, you know, you don't have a board auditor as required by statute. The audit committee policy will be coming next week for the first reading and then the second meeting in August will be the second reading, so that will be hopefully finalized by September. But I would not wait until that happens before you start doing the process to secure a new auditor.
And, and thank you for bringing that up. I know we had that conversation yesterday about that, so that is something that we need to, and we were also, because they need one for in-house here as well, so maybe doing a duo ad? I don't, I don't know. I know it has to be taken care of through HR. Okay, Dr. Savage?
I just have one last comment, just kind of on the earlier dialogue about the suggestion of the retreat and so forth as just a, as a potential, you know, strategy. I would just kind of suggest that for my role as a superintendent now, as a, as a person who's been a candidate for superintendent positions in other areas, who's considered that as a career goal and so forth, from the perspective of a superintendent, I just want to say that, you know, the functionality and the support of a governance team is probably the most important factor that a superintendent would look for. So as we talk about someone who, to try to attract the very best possible candidate to our district, whether that's internal, external, I would just highlight to all the board members that really the way that the team conducts itself, the way that we disagree, the way that we move forward when we disagree, the way that we dialogue, the way that we direct, the way that we give feedback, all those things are recorded here for, for all to see, our community and so forth, but, but also any of those candidates. So I would just venture to say that as, as we certainly want to pursue the timeline that the board has set forward and, and, you know, recruit a partner that can certainly give you a lot more feedback as they've conducted numerous searches, just from my vantage point, just, I want to highlight for everyone that I think it's in all of our best interests, all of us, that we really think about that aspect of it, of what can we do to make us the most effective governance team possible so that we can not just conduct our daily work, but that we can attract the very best possible candidates and demonstrate to them that they would be going to a place where even if a board member or two or three disagreed with the decision, how we resolve that and how we work together is, demonstrates professionalism and a commitment to each other, that it's not about us or what we want, it's about all of us together being a very professional, dedicated team. And that's not to throw an indictment at any one person, that's just to say that as a group, I think we have to look back on the years and years and years of how the board has graded themselves, because I think that's with different superintendents. You know, just to consider that, you know, if the superintendent changes, but the dynamics remain, what, how can we, you know, we can't control others, but what can we do for ourselves? And I just want you to know that it is your interim superintendent here, I am so committed to being a part of that healing. And so I will be reflecting on that work myself and I just wanted to highlight that because I heard it dialogued here and I thought from my vantage point, I should at least share that feedback with the board as well.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much. And again, I know that this ran a little bit longer than was scheduled and so I appreciate all of your, everybody sticking it out and our next scheduled meeting of the board is on Monday, August 16th. There's, will be a board workshop at 1:00 PM. On Tuesday, August 17th, there is a board briefing at 1:00 and an action meeting at 6:00 PM. Also, Ms. Gittens is working, still working with the website and anything pertaining to the superintendent's search, that's not on my script, but I'm just saying it, anything pertaining to the superintendent's search will be on that website. Seeing no other visits coming before this body and seeing no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.